Welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, March 26. We are coming to this evening from the Savage Center. In attendance with me this evening are my colleagues, Ms. Kate Sivingdon and Ms. Teresa Stewart, Mr. Hiltz and Dr. Giblin will be joining us shortly. I'm going to ask everybody in attendance at this time to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so first order of business is approval of minutes. We have several sets of minutes in our packet. We have the executive session minutes from March 5th, March 19th, as well as the open session minutes from March 19th. Is there any discussion or questions on those minutes this evening?
Two minor sets of edits.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Dawn, I didn't get this to you ahead of time. On the March 19th business minutes, it said that we were remote, but we were hybrid, so if we could just make that change. And then if I could, in the addenda under me, although I was talking about the Latin program, when I referenced that, it was part of the Portrait of the Grad, I was talking about world language as a whole, so if you could just make that change. And then March 19th executive session, if we could just indicate that Joan was remote, because it said she was in person.
So I'll make a motion to approve all those minutes with those edits. Sure.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so if that passes three to zero. Okay. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Left, are there any correspondence this evening?
We do not have any.
Fabulous. All right, moving right along to the next item on the agenda is the warrant report. I'll read the warrant into the record. So this week I signed warrants in the amounts of $1,949,466.20, $21,083.85, and $5,807.54 for a grand total of $2,513,098.68. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Great. All right, so moving right along to our next item is public comment. Reminder to the public, you can access public comment in several ways. You can call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to request a hybrid remote link for the meeting. You can also call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to put your name on our in-person public comment list. You can also come to our meeting in the Savage Center at our meeting time and sign in in person. I do have one person signed in for public comment this evening, and Mr. Left, did anybody call ahead to pre-sign up?
I did not tonight.
Fabulous. So with that, at 7:10, I'll declare public comment open, and our first person is Ms. Laura Jordan. Oh, and just a reminder, I'm sorry, as always, you have three minutes, and yes, thank you.
No problem. Thank you again. Good evening, Laura Jordan, Wilson Street, concerned parent, concerned Latin teacher. I thank you for the opportunity to speak once again. As a member of the public, I've been approached by countless citizens, parents whose kids play sports with my kids, parishioners of my church that we belong to, and they're all shaking their heads in disbelief, asking me, what is our town thinking getting rid of a subject as crucial as Latin? Do they not know? I've already addressed this importance with you ad nauseam. Instead, I'd like you to consider how it feels to be in their shoes and hear that more administrators are being hired, and along with them, more administrative assistants, more directors of this, liaisons of that. Where does all that money come from? The sacrifice of teachers whose sole job is to care for students, foster their growth day in and day out. Why does a middle school with an enrollment of under 1,000 students need one principal and three assistant principals when I'm teaching in a high school of around 1,600 with the same number of administrators? I also wonder why does the high school with even fewer students than the 1,600 require two principals? We're not asking for much in the grand scheme of things, but you could be saving some kids and parents from some major disappointment in time on learning. It seems as though this is a demographic that's now falling by the wayside. That is, the kids who show up to school every day, behave appropriately, and strive to be challenged. We've heard from a number of students in the last couple of weeks who've said that Latin is a class where they feel like they belonged. I don't know how to describe that feeling to those of you who may not be in this field, but let me just tell you that what they said resonated with me. If I may just leave you with this, last night, two incumbent members of the Andover School Committee lost their seats to two newcomers. One of them was a student who just graduated last fall, last spring, excuse me. His portrayal to the public of the shortcomings of that committee eerily echo what we're witnessing here in Andover, mainly budget problems stemming from an increase in administrative positions and a decrease in student-facing positions. I suggest we start listening to our students as well as the parents, people like myself, and please do anything you can to find a way to save this for them. Thank you.
Okay, that is everyone that I have on the list tonight, but is there anyone else that wishes to speak during public comment? Okay. Seeing none, at 7:13, I will declare public comment closed. Okay. We'll move on to our next agenda item, and this is our appearances. We have a couple of appearances this evening, so first, we are going to invite Mr. Jeff Carr up to give us our winter fine arts recognition.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. This is one of the fun times I get to come in front of you and talk about all the great things that we do, celebrate our students' work and our teachers' hard work and dedication. I went back and I looked at the winter into the fall as well, just so when you see this, it's all encompassing from the beginning of the year until now. So these are our fine art celebration for the year. And I went through discipline-wise, just so you keep it nice and clean. It said five minutes on the board, so I'm going to do my best to keep it as close to that as possible, but I am telling you right now, I will go over. On our visual art side of things, our students are involved in a lot of outside shows and different groups, so that the first one is our Scholastic Arts Awards. And Peter Janade, and I apologize for names, received an honorable mention, you'll see him again, and that's through Scholastic Arts. There is a teachers group called the Massachusetts Art Education Association, and they have something called the Amazing Emerging Artist Recognitions Exhibition. And we had quite a few of our students receive recognition for their work there. So we can go to the next one, and that's just talking about what it is. And again, the visual is important for you all to see. I think in years past, I've spoken through a lot of these names, but I think that seeing it in action is really important. So Jolene Lamberty's hydrangeas, and Nora, and I'm not going to go there, just out of...
Dujaji.
Dujaji? Perfect, now I will never forget. Anxiety, and what's nice about this one, she won the Blick Art Award for Painting. If anybody had a chance to get over to the Moore Library over the weekend for the partnership between the Norwood Garden Club, I believe?
Evening Garden.
Evening Garden Club. This artwork was exhibited alongside a floral arrangement, so it was really neat to see the interpretation of the florist with the student artist. And that was both with Norwood students and Walpole students as well. But she won the Blick Art Award for Painting for this one. Bridget Connelly's Marsh Side. And these are all different mediums, too. Rowan Glady's Where Have All The Flowers Gone? And a Button's Checkmate. Chris M.'s 3D Design Addiction and Freedom. Tayja Antoine's Evil. Jose Zerpa's Helmet 3D Design. Again, 3D design. Tess's The Living Space. Ashley Salazar's The Face of Fear. Josie Cardoza-Passara's Social Media Are We Dooming Our Younger Generations? And again, Dr. Peters, Sights in Lebanon, who won the Blick Art Award for Graphic Design. Xander Allen's Alone in Hurtings. So outside of that, there is the Youth Art Month YAM exhibition, and this is a statewide exhibition that's run by the art teachers within the state, and they recognize and submit some of their work. Elizabeth Mulaney, who's one of our art teachers, is on the board. And next slide, Jolene Lamberty, who we did see earlier on the right-hand side, was the winner for the President's Choice Award for the ninth grade, so that work. Again, going all the way back to the beginning of the year, marching band proudly moving forward. We are involved in several ensemble group organizations. MICA is the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. They receive recognition throughout the year, and at our state finals back in late October, early November, received a silver medal at the state finals, and that was held in Quincy. US Bands is a parallel organization, very similar, and at the Massachusetts State Championships in Division I, they placed third. NHS TV, I get to proudly say that you support these trips every year, and I had the good fortune of traveling with them this year, so it was really interesting for me to see what they do and the work that they do there, and it's incredible to see how they all come together and what they do. And what was nice is on our second evening there, they have an awards ceremony for all of the work that's submitted to them. They also do work throughout the conference, and they adjudicate that, but this was work done back at home. And this is a screenshot from the broadcast, and we received an Outstanding Achievement Award for High School Daily Live Show. So that is our morning news every day that we do it. We submitted and won for, or won Outstanding Achievement in our category. And these are just a couple of pictures when we were there. Couple of the students wound up going over to Raymond James Studio. They had a sports segment that they were competing within, and this was them doing a kind of a hot take on soccer and football. And this was the convention, so those are all the students down the bottom. Up in the top left, that's Pam Schneiderly, who's the teacher. And then we had, we were trying to film, and that large ship that you see in the background is pretty, but when all the boats around are honking their horns and that boat is firing cannons, it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to do a live shot. So that was, that was just part of the excitement of that event. So on our music side of things, there are multiple opportunities for our students to sing here, obviously in school, in our district, but outside of that, we have our district festival. So senior districts this year, students who gain entrance and anybody who has the asterisk next to them also received an All-State Recommendation, meaning they perform well at the region, and they were suggested that they come back and audition for Allstate. But those who made entrance into the senior districts this year were Caden Bell, Lindsay Collins, Georgia Demby, Lily Flood, Chija Gonzalez, Asher Mirz, Cece Sousa, Charlotte Kane, William Kramer, Sebastian Eugene, Catherine Gonzer, Nola Keeney, Yelena Santos, and Jackie Varney. And then on the instrumental side of things, we had Laird Bogdani, Juliette Anunzio, Jason Deli Carpini, Annika Mobano, and Partha Jama Lama Daka. So that is for our senior high school. Our junior districts are students that are in grades seven, eight, and nine, so we had some of our CMS students and some of our NHS students gain entrance into that, and as you'll see, they were very happy to be there. Nimzy Santiago Colon, Zoe Kostopoulos, Janai Lamar, Genesis Romero, Trevor Carey, Amar Ali, Jefferson, Riley Martin, Farrah Randall, Esme Shelders, and then on our instrumental side, we had Kirk Matthews, and then Gabriel Martinez Obando was actually in the jazz band this year, which was kind of cool. And speaking of jazz band, we had a very busy spring. Our jazz band, again, at MAJE, this is our Mass State Organization that celebrates jazz education. At the Cape Cod District, Cape Coastal District Festival, they received a gold medal. At the Northeast District, they received a gold medal, and just this past weekend, both the Coakley and NHS were flying with over 30 different bands from all over the state. We hosted that festival, and we received a silver at our state finals. Throughout these smaller festivals, they award recognition for soloists, and the following students were provided recognition for their playing. Billy McCann on drums, Jason Deli Carpini on trumpet, Noah Shaw on guitar, Liam McGuire on trumpet, Jason Bauer on clarinet, and Tanner Saxophone, so he was a double threat. And then MME Allstate, this will be happening this weekend. It happens out at, in Worcester, at the DCI Center, and we had three students who, from that list that had the asterisk, went and auditioned for Allstate. Caden Bell, Georgia Demby, and Jackie Varney will all be attending the festival on Friday. They'll have rehearsals out in Worcester, and then Saturday, they actually get a chance to go into Symphony Hall in Boston and have a performance in there, which is pretty remarkable. And then there's drama. So off to a very successful, wonderful production of Honey, I Am Home, which was Norwood High's entry into the 2025 Massachusetts High School Drama Festival. This gripping psychological thriller is an original play by NHS drama students Bridgette Stentrum and Nicole Martino. I do know that Mr. Quinn is looking to perhaps find another time to put it on back in the district. If that happens, I'll let you know when that is. It's really quite, quite a work. This is Dan Bustler's, given us the opportunity to show you some of the scenes, did some nice photography for us. We host the prelims at Norwood High School, so there are several rounds. There's the prelims, then there's the semifinals, and then there's the finals, and those actually take place tomorrow and Friday, and Saturday in Boston. But at the METG prelims, which we hosted at Norwood High School, we won the preliminary round and advanced to our semifinals. We were awarded All-Star Acting Awards for Lindsay Collins and Bridgette Stentrum. There was a really interesting shadow ensemble, kind of like a Greek chorus-type situation, kind of creepy, but amazing. Joey Brady, Maisy Griffin, Rita DeJay, Nicole Martino, Jackie Varney, Bridget Holgren, and Anya McDonald, they all received recognition for All-Star Acting Awards. We received Set Design and Scenic Artistry Awards for Rowan Glady, Abby Gorman, Hannah Nguyen, Chloe Caravelo, and Asher Mirz, and also for costume design Danielle Frey. It was really an arresting show to look at. It had a very 1950s, 1960s Mad Men creative aspect to it. And that's the shadow. They were creepy, but it was very, very well done. And this was at the semifinals, and this was at Joseph Case High School. Again, receiving All-Star Acting Award recognition, Bridgette Stentrum, set design, Rowan Glady, and sound design this time, Nicole Martino. And I am going to finish with our ACDA National Honors Choir, which was great. This was this past week. We had two students that were selected from over 5,000 students nationwide. They went to Dallas, Texas, and sang with the honors chorus and the honors ensemble, which I believe was over 300. And if you go to the next slide, that would be Lindsay Collins and Sebastian Eugene, and there is no better way to give you an understanding of what that sounded like than to give you a little audio clip. So over 300 of the finest singers in the country were there, and Norwood was represented with two wonderful young singers. So thank you very much for allowing us to do what we do, for supporting us in all these endeavors, and our kids benefit from it, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to put a really big shout out to all the accolades. That's amazing. Jeff and the kids, if you're out there watching this, the teachers, thank you so much for everything. So congratulations.
Emma, can I? Yeah, absolutely. Jeff, before you leave, so all those, all those kids that you just showed us in the high school, that was all high school mostly, right, that we saw?
The last bits?
Yeah, like the fine art stuff was largely high school? We didn't, we didn't see too much from middle or elementary?
The fine arts was primarily high school. There were, there were middle school students involved in the music ensemble.
Okay. Just to, to raise my asking, so all those names, those kids in ninth to 12th grade now, when I was first on the school committee, were grades one through four. And in my time here, and just as a community member and a parent, going to a variety of events, I've watched so many of those kids grow up, and so many of those names, I remember them when they were in the fourth and fifth grade jazz band, and in the grade five chorus that Mrs. Mullen used to lead. And then at the Coakley, under Mr. Bell, some of the Drama Club productions, I remember those kids onstage. And then obviously COVID came along for a lot of these kids when they were in middle school and kind of shut down stuff. So to see that they have been so resilient and rebounded, and the program has rebounded, I just feel compelled to acknowledge that and to illustrate that what you just shared with us is both in the classroom during the day and also extracurriculars. So these kids are really devoted to their craft and their passion.
All right, anything else before we move on to our next appearance? All right. So next on our agenda is an appearance by our Student Advisory Committee to give us their quarterly update.
Hey, thanks for having us again. We are back. I know last time, you guys loved our surveys, so we decided to dive deeper into that and ask more specific questions. We didn't get to the high school, because we kind of covered that last time. So this is more on fourth, fifth graders, sixth graders, and eighth graders. So yeah.
For the elementary school, we had a five-question survey, and the first question was, on a scale of one to five, how confident they felt transitioning to the middle school? And most students felt moderately confident about transitioning, and only a small percentage rated their confidence as very low. The second question was, what resources from the school would help them transition to the Coakley? And the most requested support was a school tour, followed by a schedule review, and then they found sports clubs information and peer mentoring would also be valuable. The third question was, in which of the following areas do you feel that you are most prepared for the Coakley? And they, most students felt socially prepared, followed by academically prepared, and only 18% felt emotionally prepared, highlighting a need for emotional support resources. They had a box where they could give and give supporting reasons for what they said. And they, some of them said that they felt socially prepared because they would be with their friends, and they would be with other people that they had known from previous schools. Most students felt socially ready because they had friends, and then they participated in sports, clubs, and other extracurricular activities. And then for academic preparedness, they felt they were confident because of their good study habits, their grades, and their support from their teachers. And only some felt uncertain about handling harder coursework. They also found that their fifth-grade teachers were helping them feel prepared. For emotional preparedness, some students felt confident managing their stress and challenges, whereas others expressed nervousness and fear about the middle school. They said some felt they never got stressed out with challenges, whereas others said they felt scared. For takeaway, social connections was the biggest source of confidence. Academic readiness was strong, but not across the board, and emotional preparedness was mixed, with some feeling very ready and others expressing anxiety. Our fourth question was, what do they think would be the most challenging part of transitioning from the elementary to middle school? And they thought the most challenging thing would be learning the layout of the new building and adjusting to harder classes, and then also managing their time and making new friends, although those were lower concerns. For the last question, we asked if they felt they had someone, a teacher, counselor, or peer that they could go to to help once at the Coakley. And while most found that they had someone to talk to, there was 30% that felt they did not have a support figure, highlighting a gap in available guidance.
And this was out of 210 kids that took the survey, so pretty big majority don't feel like they have someone, so.
Based on the data, our recommendations would be to prioritize school tours and schedule reviews to ease the transition, strengthen peer mentoring programs to support both social and emotional well-being, increase emotional support resources since students feel least prepared in that area, and to identify ways to ensure every student has a trusted adult or peer for guidance.
And then on to the sixth grade. Oh, and also, if you click the results, that brings you to the Google form, so you can, so you guys can see their findings and stuff. But anyways, question one, how prepared did you feel when you made the transition from elementary to middle school? Most students felt moderately prepared, 36.4 rated their preparedness out of three to five, and only 3% felt completely unprepared, so good sign. What was the most challenging part of transitioning to the middle school? Meeting new people, 30.3%, and navigating the school building were the top struggles. Managing homework were also key challenges. Adjusting to the new school, school schedule was the least common issue. Our third question was, in what ways did your elementary school help you, help you transition to middle school? School tours, 51.5%, and explaining routines in advance were the most helpful. Orientation activities and Q and A sessions were also valuable. No students had assigned mentors or buddies, so maybe going forward, like, I don't know, like, assigned mentors and buddies, but no one finds that, like, helpful. Question four, what would have made the transition easier? Clear communication on expectations and extra academic support were the most requested. More one-on-one support, 36.4%, and peer mentoring programs, 27.3% were also suggested. Better orientation programs could have also helped. Did you feel welcome and included during your first weeks at Coakley Middle School? 90.9% felt welcome, and 9% did not, also good signs. Was the information about clubs, sports, and extracurricular activities easy to find and understand? 75.8% found it easy to access, but 24% had difficulty finding information. Question seven, do you feel, do you feel like you have someone, teacher, counselor, or peer you can go to for help? 87% said they do, 12% said they do not. Question eight, if you could give one piece of advice to incoming middle schoolers, what would it be? Stay calm, the transition gets easier, learn the building layout early, be prepared, make friends, and stay out of drama, stay organized, and complete work on time. And then recommendations for improvement, expand school tours and clear schedule info, introduce a peer mentoring buddy system, improve communication and club and support resources, encourage teachers to support students emotionally and academically. So this is just like data we, like, found, and like, we were like, here's what you guys can do to improve, so just food for thought. And then for the eighth grade, we had, our first question was, on a scale of one to five, how confident do you feel transitioning to the high school is? While 44.6% feel confident about moving to the high school, 18% feel uncertain and unprepared, this suggests that while most students feel ready, a significant portion may still need additional reinsurance. Question two, what in middle school has helped you prepare for high school? Check all that apply. Personal interests, 75.4%, and subject exposure played a major role in preparation, indicating that students benefit from exploring diverse academic paths early. Conversations with teachers, 50%, and career programs, 43%, also provided valuable guidance, highlighting the impact of structured support from teachers. Question three, what do you feel like you need more support with? Check all that apply. The biggest challenge was managing schoolwork, which makes sense, followed by future planning, 45%, and time management. These results suggest a need for stronger study habits, clear expectations, and more structured academic planning before high school. What has been the most challenging or stressful? What has been the most challenging or stressful part of preparing you for high school? The biggest stressors including, include understanding expectations, which was twenty-six point two percent. Time management, twenty-three percent, and choosing courses, twenty-three percent. Many students feel the transition over, the transition is overwhelming due to increase in academic and schedule responsibilities. Question five, what are you, what are you most excited to get involved with at the high school? Fifty percent of students are eager to join, eager to join athletics, followed by arts slash music, which is twenty percent, and academic pathways, seventeen point two percent. This highlights the importance of promoting extracurricular engagement as a way to ease social and academic transitions. Question six, based on your experience as an eighth grader, what advice and tips would you share with elementary school students who are about to transition to the middle school? Stay organized and develop strong time management skills. Don't stress too much, the transition is easier than it seems. Make new friends and be open to meeting people from different schools. Get involved in clubs, sports and extracurricular activities, respect teachers and ask for help when needed. Turn and work on time. Good academic habits in middle school lead to success in high school. And then our recommendations would be provide structured time management and organization resources. I know, like, teachers, like, already cover this, but like, this is like what, what they need more of, I guess. Improve clarity on high school expectations and course selection, offer additional guidance for future academic planning, encourage early involvement in clubs and sports to ease social transitions. So, yeah. Thank you.
Great. That was wonderful. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for our student advisory committee?
I don't have a lot, but like.
No, we love, that's it. I love data. Scientists love data.
Yeah.
To pour over, which is nice. You, did you talk to fifth graders at all the school, the elementarys? Or were you able to, I'm curious who all got the survey?
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yep.
It was fourth and fifth grade?
There's more fifth graders.
Majority was fifth grade, but there were some fourth grade answers.
Yeah, I didn't realize that you linked to the, um, the actual responses, so I just clicked on it now. So there was two hundred and eighty-seven fourth and fifth graders and there were thirty-three sixth graders. But if you could fix the link for the eighth graders, that takes us back to the sixth grade one.
Oh, does it?
Whenever you have time, you could just fix that, because it's really great to have all that. Thank you so much. Mr. Luft, there's obviously some concerns here.
Yeah, I mean, if I could just say a couple of things about the recommendations, I think they're fantastic. And, um, a couple of things to start with, uh, you know, talking about the kids moving up to the middle school. The school committee will be receiving an update on kind of a transition timeline at our next meeting in terms of what we're doing with visits. I will share that because the, the new middle school is still being built. We're not actually allowed in it until August. Kids won't be able to get in there until mid-August, actually, so we will be scheduling tours at that time. But we're going to have some of the, the, the middle school administration come down to meet with the kids at the schools as, as one way to kind of remedy that. I think it's in, I think it's in May, um, April or May. And then we'll do some individual things with some of the, um, some of our higher needs students to make sure that their individual accommodations are met that way. In terms of the high school transition, I'm happy, you know, that we have the freshman academy, um, staff member in the budget this year that will help support just those recommendations that you're looking at, so I think that's really great. And obviously there are some other things that we can address. I really like the idea of the mentors for the middle school kids. It was one of the recommendations too, but, um, what other concerns were you wondering about?
Yeah, I think I, I know you're going to give us the update at our next meeting. I'm just hoping maybe you and Dr. Fraser could take a look at this and make sure your planning is covering what our students raised and then update us then, rather than me bombarding you with questions now.
We'll, we'll bring this to our middle school transition meeting that we have monthly with our staff, both from the middle and high school and elementary school, and we'll actually talk about these recommendations and see if we can put them into play and, and, yep. This is awesome.
Thank you so much. You guys did a great job.
Great job. Thanks for giving us data we can use.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Have a good night. And of course, just a reminder to Ms. Stewart, we do need to still schedule another meeting with the, uh, the SAC before our next quarterly.
Did they give you dates or we, I forget?
No, we were going to give them dates.
Okay. Okay. Well, we can talk about agenda, so we'll talk about agenda later.
Yeah, we'll get there. Just wanted to remind.
And then we'll get back to Dr. Hall again ASAP.
Um, okay, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is superintendent report. Take it away, Mr. Luft.
Thank you, Chair Muzel. Um, so first of all, today was Student Government Day. And, and a big shout out to General Linsky for really helping promote, um, our high school students who acted as our town officials and our elected officials, um, all day today, actually. We had multiple, uh, school committee members and a superintendent that joined me this morning at around eight-thirty. We talked about kind of the school committee process, how this process works in this room. Then they met with the, the principals and they heard about issues that are occurring in all of the schools. They then took those issues, um, I thought about what they could debate tonight on a mock school committee meeting. And they actually debated that here at six o'clock and they came up with the idea around, is AI useful or is AI appropriate for, for schools? Uh, and it was amazing how they processed through that because instead of hitting it as AI in the end, they hit it as, um, you know, are kids feeling engaged, right? And is, is engagement one of those reasons that students are trying to use AI more? Uh, and so they actually had a recommendation to the superintendent, who was Sophie Braggadere at the time, to come up with a plan to develop different kind of accommodations and different, um, uh, ways to engage kids at the elementary level so they wouldn't actually have to use AI. So it was a really great conversation and how they got there was really thoughtful, I think. Um, I know, uh, Emery and Kate were here for that too and it was really, it was really, really wonderful. They also in the morning went to the town hall and they engaged in the town meeting where they actually had to allocate with other students who, and other boards, the finance commission and the select board, the board of health and, and the town, and other town officials on how to spend that three thousand dollars. And they went through the entire town meeting process. And I think there was probably three amendments to every article that were all voted down regularly. So it was actually just like town meeting. But it was, it was really good and they actually, you know, they, they actually, um, put, I think, about three or four hundred dollars back into reserves for free cash for next year because they couldn't decide. So they're savers too. So it was a really wonderful experience. Um, I'll just kind of shout out to Sophie Braggadere, our superintendent, Charlotte Seikman, committee member, Leard Bogdan, a committee member, Maisie Griffin, uh, who was also our chair and a committee member, Kaden Belt as a committee member, and then joining us this morning with Hillary Mederos as a committee member and Sienna Powers as a committee member. Really wonderful day, uh, really excited that it happens and I was happy to be part of it, so. Really cool. The second, uh, part of my agenda, um, as you know, I have, um, we have engaged in a, a search for our next director of student services beginning July one. Uh, that search process resulted in two finalists coming for visits in the school district, actually three coming for visits and, and interviews. Uh, one actually, um, removing herself from candidacy in the end, but two final candidates kind of did forms with the, um, with the community. Uh, they were great candidates. Um, I think they were incredibly qualified. Um, I think each of them could have done the, the role well. But there was a, um, a caution from the committee, of the community about wanting someone who had more than middle school experience. And both candidates were very focused in the middle school. Uh, so ultimately I decided to, um, discontinue the search. And I am happy tonight, however, uh, to, uh, request that you appoint Ms. Catherine Davy as an interim director of student services beginning July one, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Kate is here tonight, uh, to have, to speak with you, um, a little bit, make some comments, I hope. But I, I just want to say that having somebody with a district-wide experience, someone who knows Norwood, I think is a really great way to, um, take all the wonderful things that are happening and continue them, but also take those things in the, in the audit that are coming out and really help us game plan for next year. So happy to have Kate come up and, and talk to you.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Superintendent Luft. I am Kate Davy. I was formerly a task teacher at the Callahan School years ago. Um, I have just started my seventh year as assistant director of special education. I did, um, three of those at TECA and this is beginning my fourth year in Norwood with this amazing student services staff and all of my colleagues at, um, The Savage. I'm really excited about this opportunity. I'm excited that Superintendent Luft has the confidence. I have been blessed with a lot of kind, uh, generous comments over the last couple of months of, uh, this process of their confidence, my student services department, um, my fellow colleagues, central admin, the facilitators, the team chairs, everybody, um, giving me a lot of, uh, kind words over my abilities to do this position. So I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you and, um, hopefully get approved.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, or like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, appointment of Catherine Davy as our interim student services director starting July one.
The second?
Second.
Second, okay. So moved by Teresa, second by Kate. Any other discussion?
If I can just very briefly say, I've seen Kate in action when she was a task teacher at the Callahan. And Kate, I, I, I know without a doubt that you have not only the leadership, but the compassion for this role. Um, and I'm really excited for you to have the opportunity.
Thank you. It's been, uh, amazing to be in the schools this last three years. These are, Norwood students are the best and they deserve the best. So I'm excited to take our audit and see the improvements that they suggest and move us forward in that direction with this, uh, team of educators that I could not have dreamt up if I tried to myself. But this is about the students and they are, you know, this is their childhood and their education and we're going to work really hard to make sure that they have every opportunity that they should have.
I'm, congratulations.
Thank you.
I just have more of a process question. So because this is a one-year appointment, what does it look like a year from now?
So, uh, Kate and I will, will, will date on, you know, in the, in the role, so to speak, and, and she'll see if she likes it. You know, and then, um, we'll have a conversation about a search in the, in the spring and see how that works.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are the exact terms we talked about.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
I.
That was fabulous. You're so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And, and thank you to everyone in the community and the staff, um, who participated in the search process. I really appreciate that, the great, great support and people that came out to do that.
Emery?
Yes.
Could I ask Superintendent Luft, uh, briefly, if you could just, um, this is not a new position, we are refilling the position. Um, but if you could just speak briefly so everybody understands, this is a position that we're required to have by law.
Yeah, every, every district with more than a thousand students is required to have a full-time director of special education. And this particular director of student service position covers that role among other support services, guidance, uh, nursing and so on, so.
Thank you.
Is that it for your report tonight, sir?
That is it for my report, see.
Okay. All right, so we will move right into the next agenda item, which is budget. Uh, we're going to talk first about our budget subcommittee update. Ms. Stewart?
Yes, very short and sweet. Um, after last Wednesday, um, Kate made a motion, the full school committee, um, well, four zero one, I think David abstained from it, but the majority of the school committee asked the budget subcommittee to meet again. So we met on Monday, um, with, uh, Mr. Luft, um, Ms. Manion, Dr. Munoz and also, uh, Mr. Jeff Kerr, uh, joined our meeting on Monday. Um, and we followed up on the questions and concerns from last week. I'm not going to say too much about that because I'm going to hand it over, um, to our administration team to let you know what we did. But we did revisit all the questions from last week and there is an update from our administration on the specialist schedule.
Okay. Uh, I will kick this off. Find the right one here. So this is just a memo that I created regarding some of the questions that we had last week. If this is still here. So I'm going to have Dr. Munoz walk you through a presentation in just a minute, but the major question that was asked of us last week is kind of why did we go through this process? And I just want to start by saying that I, I very much value, uh, the relationship we have with our, um, with our staff and our, and our union and I appreciate all advocacy that, that comes our way. I think it's important. I think it's the only way that we come to a, an agreeable solution to do what's best for kids. Um, that said, um, you know, I want, I want you all to know that we will continue and have been working with our folks to make sure that we have a schedule that works for everybody. Just, I want to say, two days ago, I think it was two days ago. Yeah, it was yesterday. It was Wednesday. Uh, we met again and there are multiple renditions of schedules going on. Both that came out and I want to give a big shout out to Amy Wester, who's put, um, a lot of work into a schedule that might be doable for them that still meets some of the needs that we have, including what's in the budget. So at the end of the day, we're all still working together to focus on what's in the budget and kind of move forward. Uh, but I did need to share with you, um, kind of why we got here. So, uh, and Dr. Munoz will go through that. So we went through, um, beginning in December and got some schedules from the specialists, um, some drafts, uh, that were worked together with the principals too, so with the idea that we had two hundred and ninety or so students moving up to the, um, fifth grade next year, in addition to the current fifth graders that are going to be moving out. The schedule that was provided, she had, had more than one hundred and twenty forty-minute blocks per week that weren't direct specialist teaching time. So that's a tremendous amount of time and it's based on the fact that we have six elementary schools and specialists are scheduled all over. It's really difficult. Um, and I will say that I know the specialists would be working in different places and, and supporting the schools in different ways. They were working with the principals to try to figure that out. When I came in and I said, listen, I, Dr. Munoz, I really need you to take a look at the schedules in general and figure out if we can become a little more efficient with this because we have a lot of open time there. And so that's kind of how the process started to roll.
So, sorry, Tim, Mr. Claver, when you say open time, you mean time when the teachers were not with students? They were?
They were, they were not directly teaching art, directly teaching music, directly teaching library, directly teaching, um, phys ed or wellness. And this is non-inclusive of the preps. We took the preps out of that mix, so they still had their preps, but it was, on top of that, it was that much time. That was open in the schedules. Um, so we started looking at those things. Dr. Munoz presented a schedule to me, a very initial schedule, um, that we, we, we actually spoke to and you heard about this last week. That had thirty-five minute blocks, for example, um, where, um, specialists could go through and they would travel each day to the next school. They would go as teams. Um, that was the initial piece and you heard a lot about that one. Uh, even before last week, he'd been working on different ones in collaboration with the folks, got one up to forty minutes. And so that's kind of where we are now with some different pieces. We solved space issues, uh, you know, prior to last week. What the, one issue we really didn't solve was the traveling every day issue, which is a concern of the, of the staff. But we were also trying to figure out ways where, where, uh, teachers, even if they had to travel, and Dr. Munoz kind of figured this out, would have some time before or after that travel block to be able to prep for the next school, for example, and if that meant that they took their lunch at twelve-thirty instead of, 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 during the travel time, they would have more time and there were ways to figure that. He'll share that. Um, so we went through that. We had more than ten meetings, kind of having those discussions. I just want to say we rec, we recognize the challenges associated with travel. Uh, we certainly do. Uh, we recognize the reduction in library time, uh, but we do hope that we can shift the primary focus there to more of the technological aspects of library. Um, and we recognize, uh, the aspect of specials ending at the conclusion of the school day, which is really hard to get kids out of the specials, get them on the buses and all those things. Uh, those are all issues that we have, that one we have now, actually, so that's just a, a different thing. But we also recognize positively that this schedule allows more common prep time in every single school for grade-level teachers. It provides more efficiency and better scheduling of the special education, ELE and intervention services, because those folks can easily, more easy, uh, easily pick those grade one kids at the same time and work with them. So they're not trying to grab kids from different classes at different times. So with all of those intervention services, this is a benefit of this, of this particular block schedule. And in one of the, um, renditions that was presented to us, um, from the specialist the other day, there are some times, at least three days, where that can happen too. So we're working together to try to meet these, um, get these positives as well. Uh, we also, uh, recognize that, that, uh, the positives of, um, equity among all the elementary schools for specials, which really hasn't been in place, um, separate spaces for art and music, um, as well as being able to transition this model when we do new redistricting in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So there are tremendous amount of benefits to this for kids. I heard a lot last week about how we're going to damage programming, um, or, or I should say hurt programming. I want to say to everyone here, um, that this actually increases, uh, the amount of time that kids currently get from around fourteen hundred minutes or so to, to about eighteen hundred minutes in music, art, math, uh, music, art, wellness, um, uh, might have missed one.
Library, fashion.
And library. Library will come down, but the other ones would go up to about eighteen hundred minutes. So those programs get beefed up and we're adding, obviously, a wellness teacher shifting one of those to the middle school. So we're adding there, we're adding art and music to the middle school as well. So we're increasing services in those areas. We are decreasing some library. Um, there's. So we're increasing services in those areas. We are decreasing some library. There's no question there. But we are trying to do better on the student side. Again, we're going to continue to work with folks to make sure we have a schedule that works for everyone. But with that, I do want to have Dr. Munoz go through his very interesting presentation that he will walk you through to share with you what some of the schedules look like. Both the one that was presented to us originally, as well as the one that he has developed. Now, there are other schedules here that have been presented to us that we will be considering until we figure it out. But I did want to share with you the two different ones that were considered, both at the beginning with all the blocks open and then the one, one of the ones that Dr. Munoz has created.
Thank you, Dr. Luff. Yeah, I think he said, he covered a lot of things that I probably would have covered in this thing. But you'll see a couple of schedules here. One is like early on and one is like as of a week ago. We have like nine different versions of a schedule, even to a point where the principal said, hey, can we eliminate ones that we know are not possibilities anymore so we can focus on the ones that are? And so we started doing that as well. But as you can see, Jeff talked about this a week ago, and I'm not sure I have all the dates in there. So if I don't, if I don't, I apologize. But we've been in conversation since December, really because of two reasons. One, the Coakley transition, we wanted to make sure that we had a special schedule for staffing purposes so Jeff could think about how to work with Dr. Frazek with staffing of the Coakley. And also the ability to create scheduling services for students with IEPs, for our multi-annual learners, for tier-two and tier-three services before the summer comes. It's been hard for principals to create the schedule a year before because staffing was never settled until probably summer. But we knew with an efficient schedule, and Dr. Luff is trying to help make those decisions early on where principals can actually have their staffing models. So we know exactly how many ELE teachers we need in a certain building, how many special education teachers we need, and what their schedules will be so they're not negotiating time with teachers in September. So that's the gist behind the model. So this was the very, very first schedule that the specialists had brought in as a status quo. I call it status quo because like, we said, let's create a version where the schedule stays as is, but 5th grade is no longer in the picture. So it's the old staffing model that we had prior with, you know, five librarians, four PE teachers, three art and three music. And so this was the old staffing model. And we said, okay, if we just took out 5th grade, what would the schedule look like? And so they came with the version, and this is one of the many versions that we've had to look at. But regardless of what other version you would have created with that staffing model, it would have came out to something like this. It may look different, but basically if you see on the left, there's seven teaching periods for specials in a day. So that's 35 for the whole week. You have seven on Monday, seven on Tuesday, seven on Wednesday, these 35 teaching periods. And so you can see the classes per building, the Willet has the most classrooms that has to be serviced for specials. The Callahan next year will only have 10, so they have the least amount of classrooms. So looking at this as an example, if we were pairing art and music, have a pair of schools that they go to, because there's three. So one has two schools, another art and music teacher will have two schools, et cetera, et cetera. Art, library and PE is different because there's more than three per subject. So their schedule is a little harder to explain, because where you would have a librarian at the Callahan maybe four days a week, they're going to go to Oldham to cover Oldham one day a week. So that's how, it's a little hard to explain. But this is easier to pair, because Callahan and Cleveland are paired with music and art. So if we look at the music and art schedule, if the Callahan has 10 classes next year and the Cleveland has 13 classes next year, we need 23 art classes and 23 music classes to cover specials for the week. So if you click the next button, you can see that in the red, that is where our teacher is not teaching a class. So the one art teacher that is in there for the Callahan and the Cleveland, those red circles and those numbers, they are not teaching at that time, but they still have covered every single class for the Callahan and Cleveland to receive one art class each. So, and this is because they don't have to teach 5th grade, there's no more 5th grade anymore, right? There's other classes that are now gone. And to say that they don't just still do work, they sure do. They probably have supplies they got to manage to take care of. I know principals have them see some small groups at times, like a PACS class or something like that. So there is time in their schedule to do those things, but this was a lot of non-teaching periods, what we called it.
And I will just like state, you know, and I know that they were working with principals to try to figure out how to support kids during those times. They mean, I just want to recognize that.
Yes, Jeff Kerr was already in conversation with principals saying, what else could we do to help support you in your buildings? So that was already currently happening as the schedule was being shown. If you click the next button again, you'll see the music teacher actually has two additional classes because when kids take an instrument class in 4th and 5th grade, but it's now just 4th grade, if they decide not to take an instrument, they go to music. So they take music twice a week. So they get two additional classes, one for the Callahan and one for the Cleveland. If you click one more time, you can see the music teacher, even though they got two additional classes, will still have periods where they don't have a class. So this is what, when Dr. Luff said, hey, there's a lot of, you know, space in here where there's non-teaching periods, you take these two schools for an art teacher, and then the other two art teachers are kind of a similar model. So we wanted to say, could we make this schedule efficient and what would that look like? So the library is more complex. We have two, we have, you know, librarians, we're getting two, kindergarten through 3rd grade was getting two library classes a week. But we have five librarians to help cover that. But even with that extra classes and no more 5th grade, there were still empty periods for librarians and there were still empty periods for physical education as well. Next slide. So this is a sample of a blocking schedule, and this has probably changed already since we last put this presentation up. Because it's been, I would say, we wouldn't even gotten to this schedule had we not been talking to the specialists and the principals as often as we have.
And this is not set in stone, right?
Right, it's not set in stone. Like I said, this version is probably already morphed into a different version. So same teaching loads, right? But now we're moving into a, pairing all specialist teachers with, in this version, with schools. So not only will music and art be with the Callahan and Cleveland, there'll also be one PE teacher with those two schools and one librarian with those two schools. And you need eight blocks to kind of save four blocks for this school, four blocks for this school. So now we're talking about the equal amount of time to create block scheduling for IEP services, for ELE services, for tier-two, tier-three, and for other pull-out resource services like that. Now there's a better opportunity here because you can see all the grades will go to specials at the same time the whole week. That was the version, this is why, more why this version was created. But even with this version created, if you click one more button, there's still blocks where they're not, there's some times that they don't have to teach, right? Everyone gets one prep period a day, so we want to make sure that happens, right? And you can see that there's an opportunity for that. Now, this schedule, the biggest challenge that Dr. Luff spoke to was the travel time. If I am teaching at the Callahan and I got 15 minutes to get over to the Cleveland and then take my lunch, that may not be realistic if I got to clean up materials. So we said, how can we look at making sure a teacher is not teaching either before or after specials? So if you see up top the one in the four red, the one in the four that's red, that our teacher doesn't have a class there. So now they have an additional 40 minutes to help them transition to the Cleveland on those two days. And then on the back end, oh, the numbers go away. You can see on the other two days, there's two more days, so four days a week. In this version of a schedule, the art teacher has an additional 40 minutes plus their lunchtime, plus 15 minutes of transitioning to prepare for their next school. And then the fifth day, right now, we're trying to figure that out, where if we're saying, okay, if they only have the 30-minute lunch and the 15-minute travel time, could they use that 30-minute lunch and make it a 45-minute travel time and set up and then take their lunch after they teach a period or so? So like, for instance, like when you see the five right there, like you can see like, oh, maybe our could take a lunch there. So we're looking to see where else in the schedule, because we know there are holes in the schedule that they don't teach class. Can we strategically place those in places where they could take a lunch at a different time? And it won't be every day, maybe one or two days a week. So that's how we're kind of trying to think about this schedule in transition time. There's been times thrown out that we can start specials a little earlier. Obviously, we're going to 2:05 right now, and the current schedule as is, specials only goes to 1:50. So 15 minutes every single day. There's no specials at the end of the day because of transportation and because of other things that we're looking at, so that we as a district have to fix. And so that is the version of that. If you go one more over to our, so we try to get the pros and the cons of that version of a schedule. And there's pros and cons to every version that we're looking at. There's no schedule that's perfect. That's why we keep on having these dialogues with each other. But basically, the biggest version for me on the academics lens is the block scheduling. How can we be more efficient with our ELE staffing, with our special education staffing? You know, if we're only having a certain amount of students that are MLs in a school building and we only need a certain amount of teachers, but we can't have those certain amount of teachers in a building because our scheduling doesn't allow it, so we have to hire more teachers, which we come to you and say, hey, guys, we need another ELE teacher to service these students. So we're trying to get in front of that, in front of that, in front of that challenge. Obviously, grade levels, you can, all specialist teams will be assigned to two schools so they kind of have a little cohort amongst them with being assigned to schools. The biggest thing that Dr. Luff alluded to, you can see some of the bullet points here, is that the common prep time for teachers, you know, they don't have to sit with each other, but a lot of them do, and a lot of them will. But we want to make sure they have that opportunity. But the specials minutes on the new schedule is, they currently are getting 1,440 minutes of class. That's 36 classes for art all year long. But with the new schedule, block scheduling, we put a fifth-day rotation in there. They'll actually get nine additional classes in each subject. So where we are, losing library services, we're opting to give them more art, music and PE in grades kindergarten through 3rd. So, but we are still trying to solve this travel problem because that seems to be the biggest hiccup, is having specialists travel every single day is what we're trying to get in front of. So like Dr. Luff said, Amy has come up with a couple of versions to do less travel days that we're taking a look at. We shared them with principals. We had a big meeting yesterday. We're going to continue to meet this Friday and talk more about the schedules and see what versions that we're having. And then as we are coming up with these versions, we're having principals pull holes in them to see what works and what not. Because my goal is, my personal goal is to make sure every elementary school has the same opportunity in their schedule. Currently, as is now, some principals really love their specialist schedules. Other principals have a huge challenge with their schedule. And it's nobody's fault, it's just the way the staffing happened to work. They're saying, oh, this school doesn't have enough sections. This school has too many sections, therefore I have to put, you know, I have to move adults. So we're trying to get ahead of that now. And then whatever we create now, can it be maintained for the next school year when we put the Willet at a K4 and to keep that structure where we're not doing a whole new structure yet?
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. So that is it for that presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions about that?
So as it stands, we're back to 40 minutes.
Yeah, we both, everyone has a version of 40 minutes. There's a 40-minute schedule of the version that I created. Amy has created a 40-minute version of hers with the new staffing proposals that we have.
And it's likely that with less library time, our digital awareness and digital, that stuff, we're not going to lose out on that. That's going to be...
I think as part of this recommendation, we've been talking about the library services. And I think I'll be asking Dr. Munoz to look at the library curriculum in general, right? And so what are those primary focuses that we need to focus on? And I think the goal, the goal should be, and obviously this is conversations with folks, but the goal should be to focus on some of the more technological skills in the library time. You know, and we have some of the literacy skills that we can incorporate in the classrooms as well.
Which we have been in conversations with. I know that the lead librarian has asked me. He says, hey, we have this one technology program that we do, but we only have one for all six schools. And I said, well, let's talk about getting one for each building so we don't have to worry about stuff like that. It's actually short money, so we can do stuff like that, so, yeah.
And I will share too that the student government, kids today, they had a little bit of a debate on conversation about the importance of those technological skills too, which was good in their meeting. And I didn't bring it up to them at all, it just kind of came up out of the...
Amy.
Yep.
JJ, I think you said in the budget subcommittee that this will allow no special to be on a cart, right? Art, music will all have classroom space in all six schools?
We've talked to all school leaders to make sure that no one's on a cart, everyone has their own space.
Okay.
Share space, their own space. Everyone will have a space. Our goal is to not have anybody on a cart.
Okay. And the space concerns of some principals have been resolved. You've figured those out.
Yeah, as late as yesterday, nobody in the principal meeting, all principals showed up, said that they had a space concern.
Okay. And is it still Callahan, Cleveland for one teacher? Will it vouch for another, an Oldham Prescott, or did that change?
No, that is actually, we changed it and showed a different version of it for next year's numbers.
Okay.
Because if you look at next year's numbers, Willet's the biggest and Callahan's the smallest, so you think you'd pair them up.
Mm-hmm.
So we have equal teaching loads. The following year, though, the numbers even out and the Willet goes down.
Okay.
So actually, the Cleveland will be the biggest school next year, and two years from now, the Callahan will be the smallest. So these current setups that you just mentioned
Yep.
will actually be sustainable from when we redistrict.
Okay, so you're starting in next year and then going, it will carry forward?
I think it's important to note too that we did mention here in all schedules that the Willet is currently at 35-minute specials, and they will continue at 35-minute specials for next year just because of their time they arrive and the time that they...
For next year.
For next year.
Yeah, when they get the regular bus schedule, then we can actually make them 40 minutes.
While it's still a kindergarten-only.
Yes.
Any questions?
I could just frame something from a pragmatic budgetary perspective. So every year analysis should be done on where our staff is. I think that should be done every year. And when you looked at these schools for grade-five moving out and you found those 120 open blocks, it is possible if we were not in the budget landscape that we are in, that a different conversation could have unfolded of how do we utilize those blocks and keep them K through 3? And what I heard at the last meeting was, well, we are trying to enhance art and music and wellness, which are very admirable goals. But right now, am I correct, that those goals just don't fit within the budgetary situation we're in?
That's correct, based on the budget conversations we've had, yeah. I mean, really looking at the whole district and where we can, you know, look at the services we're providing, how we're providing those services, and if we can provide similar to better services in the model, we have to look at that given the budget situation.
Yeah. And also, you know, 28% of our students have IEPs in this district. And our ML population has quadrupled since 2019. So if we're adding additional special services, it might be a time when a student is actually getting pulled out for services. And so that student becomes an equity issue. Now they don't have access to that extra enhancement because they have to actually go to services. So there's that caveat too.
Yeah.
Well, it's instructionally sound, right? It gives better instruction all across the board in a lot of different, in a lot of different ways. Not just specials, but to all of our services.
Yeah, on the pro, it's like in the pursuit of this, you started to see, and this happened, I feel like, with the elementary study, is that you start to reveal benefits sort of in other areas that help overlap, but that you can't really ignore either, you know? And in that pro list, we can see that happen with, you know, benefits that result from this. I mean, I just echo Teresa that, you know, this is not necessarily where we would, we want more. You know, we want more resources, more time, more staff. But that's not where we're at, and that's not what we're looking at down the road. So this is a way, I'll just reiterate, I think, and I appreciate the work of, and the input of the staff as well, the long-term discussions, the hard work, the back and forth, the give and the take that this type of option, you know, takes to try out. You know, obviously, you try something, if it's a disaster, you go back to the drawing board. And change is hard, for sure. But this is part of what we're facing. That's all.
Any other discussion, any other comments?
If I could add, if no one else has anything. I know I said this last weekend in Budget Subcommittee, but just to reiterate, as you continue to work with Mr. Kerr and the principals and the specialist team, I would just ask that our policies and the frameworks from DCE and the investments that we made in curriculum already stay at the forefront as you're trying to figure out how to best meet all of those things within this new framework. And Dr. Munoz, it sounds like you're already identifying maybe there might be some needs with the library curriculum. So if there are things needed to strengthen this to be the best for our students and staff, I hope you'll bring it back to us so we can figure out how to make this be strengthened, if that is part of the process.
Anything else? Great. Okay, all right, thank you for that update. We'll move on to our next agenda item. We are going to discuss our final vote for the FY '26 budget. I am on here to lead it, however. So it, I mean, in your packets, you do have the budget. Basically, what we've, what we've discussed already is that we went back as a budget subcommittee and discussed some of the items that we talked about last week during the budget hearing. We did look at different iterations, looked at different things that the committee asked us to go back and kind of relook at. Basically, what we're coming back to you with is the same budget request, the $65,292,177... million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars, that we did discuss previously. This was the number that the BBC was voting on, that Finance Commission has discussed and supported. At this time, there was a, obviously, I'll let you speak to the memo that's in there if you would like, but is it the same memo from before?
Same memo, yeah, all the same detail.
It's the same detail as from before, dated for tonight, but it is, it is the same memo. There is, we thoroughly vetted different options, and based on everything that we were able to come up with and discuss, everything we presented previously is still what we are recommending we move forward with. Are there any questions, concerns, discussion? Joan?
So, I have a question, actually, about the FY26 budget presentation.
Sure.
When I'm looking at other staffing changes, understaffing reductions and transfers, I don't see the Latin teacher there. And to me, that's a reduction. So, I recognize that that is, I don't, it's probably accounted for somewhere else in there, but when you're looking at that framework of staffing reductions, I want, I guess the question I'm asking is, this gives the impression that the only teachers that we're losing are the elementary librarians, which, not to, I'm not, so, okay, so, but my point is, that's a, that is a student-facing position, and it's kind, it, when you have something that says staffing reductions, you expect to see all of the student-facing positions in that. And I understand, I'm not suggesting malfeasance here. What I'm suggesting is that we're accustomed to seeing staffing reductions, to talk about reductions to student-facing positions. So, my question is, because there's a lot here, are there any other student-facing positions that are somehow no longer happening, all of the Latin teacher?
So, if you look at these, so you see the transfer from Latin to world language to the middle school. So we tried to say that we have a world language teacher that we're transferring, so that's where the reduction of Latin at the high school comes from, and goes to the middle school, and goes to the middle school. There is one of the wellness teacher transfers from the elementary to the specialist schedule that we're moving up to the middle school. But actual teacher reduction positions, you know, we did some transfers, is what we ended up doing in these particular cases. There's two librarians that are in this mix, and I think those...
Are they all teacher to teacher?
Hmm?
Are they all teacher to teacher?
Wellness to wellness, world language to world language.
Just at different levels.
That's correct. So I tried to align them that way in this process, whereas there are reductions of two elementary library and the BCB occupational therapists that are moving to Mass Health and Medicaid funding. Every other one's a transfer, essentially.
Okay. I just want to make sure that before we do the final vote on the budget, we are crystal clear that we are losing two student-facing positions, and that's it, and that I didn't miss anything else.
It's hard to say, because we're moving those student-facing positions to increase two other student-facing positions.
I'm talking specifically about the elementary library positions, because I see what you're saying about the Latin positions, that's a move within a, in a, it represents a loss of a program, but it's a move within that department, actually, right? Are there any other loss of positions, other than the two-point-oh elementary library?
No, well, you see, the BCBs that are transferring, and the occupational therapists transferring to Mass Health Medicaid funding.
But we're not losing them, that's just their funding sources being shifted.
That staffing reduction, the four-point-oh, that's it. Those are the ones.
Yeah. I think I'm, the question I'm asking is, this makes total sense from a budgetary perspective, right? When you're thinking about the budget. What I'm asking is, what is the impact in classrooms? If you could provide, like, almost a bulleted list of that?
I...
Right? So, you see what I'm saying, right? So, one is that we're eliminating the Latin program, the middle school is absorbing that position. What does that look like for those other shifts? I want to make sure that my understanding of those shifts is the same as what your understanding of those shifts is before we vote on that. So, like, does that make sense? Like, the wellness transfer from the elementary, is that covered in the specialist schedule? So therefore, there's no actual loss, and that is going to the middle school?
That's correct.
Can you go through each one of those transfers and just kind of do that impact piece for me?
I will, I will.
Thank you.
So, new middle school positions that we're requesting through the budget, these are the ones that we requested, six-point-six total positions. So that's a special education inclusion teacher, that is student-facing.
These are all new, right?
Yep. And art teacher, that's student-facing. A music teacher, that's student-facing. School counselor, that's student-facing. An ELE teacher, that is student-facing.
God.
And then you see the assistant principal and the point-six administrative assistant. So that's in addition to the budget for, that we currently have.
Right. That was part of the middle school planning process, those are all brand-new.
Yep.
Okay.
We are taking a point-two music teacher from the elementary specialist schedule and moving it to the middle school for instrumentals or other ways to support the music at the middle school.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What does that look like for that middle school? Like, are we finding somebody who's only going to work point-two out? Or are we adding that to somebody who's already working point-eight, like?
We have someone right now that works point-two, and so we're working through that to try to continue...
The elementary buildings have three-point-two music teachers. There's one person that comes in on Friday and teaches music at the elementary level.
Great, okay, thank you. These are the types of questions, like, I don't have this knowledge, but it's helpful to see what the impact would be, okay?
You can see the one, one middle school world language teacher, student-facing position, we're taking, we're getting that by transferring the world language teacher from the high school, specifically reducing the Latin piece.
Okay.
We are, we have a wellness teacher going to the middle school that we're transferring directly from the elementary specialist shifts. We have four special education teachers that will be coming up from the elementary school to the middle school.
Okay, can you stop on that one?
Sure.
Because the wellness one, I think, you're, is, you've already covered in the specialist schedules. What does that look like for elementary special education? Like, on the ground, what's the impact?
So what will be...
Four seems like a high number to move.
That's inclusive of program teachers as well, so there's a few programs that are moving up, and there's also, we're looking at an inclusionary model, and this is still subject to change, right? So we're still working with the principals on how this is going to look next year, but we're looking at an elementary model where each elementary school has three inclusionary teachers, one for grade three and four, one for grade two and, one, sorry, one for grades three to four, one for grades, one to two, and then we have one floater to support other inclusionary needs in the schools. And that would probably be a similar model when we go to the K-to-four model, because Willett will also have that similar model when that gets there. Now, that might change, we have a special ed audit coming, we have recommendations coming, but that would be the structure there for inclusion teachers, and then the programs are going to be dependent on a lot of conversations that we're having with the principals right now in the special ed department on how many kids we have moving up, and so we're in those works right now.
When you say programs, you mean things like task and PLC?
I do.
Okay.
So those four are moving with the educators to serve? Okay.
Okay.
And then we had twelve grade-five classroom teachers that are student-facing, shifting to the middle school.
Yeah, that's, part for part, right? That's the same number that are currently in grade five in the elementary schools.
That's correct.
Just a wholesale, okay, I'm just, I just want to, you know, I just want to make sure.
Not a problem. And then we added a one-point-zero freshman academy, that's a student-facing position to address some of the things that you heard here tonight from the students. We are adding two student-facing behavioral interventionists at the elementary level, so that's in addition to the elementary level to support some of the behaviors and whatnot that we've seen. We do have a one-point-oh Director of Safety Compliance and Communications that I've shared with you before, which is an administrative position, but I assume there will be some student work. And then you see the two, the two related service providers that were transferring to a different revenue funding, but we're continuing to keep those staff. And then you have the two elementary library positions that were decreasing, which are student-facing.
Can I just go back to those special ed teachers for one?
You can.
What is the current, is the current Model One teacher for two grades, like?
No, no, not at all, but, you know, I mean, part of it is, you know, Dr. Munoz has talked about kind of how we, how we're allocating the inclusion teachers and how we're getting services, and some need more because of the way the schedules are. So, some have three-point-five, some have two-point-five, some have three, some have one-point-five. It's different everywhere, based on how the elementary principals have kind of structured that in their schools to provide services. And so this kind of equalizes those, those per-grade level. And that might change, too, when we expand the grade level, I don't know yet for the following year, but we will be allocating the Willett teachers as well when that happens in two years.
So, does that represent a reduction in special ed inclusion teachers at the elementary school level?
No, there are no reduc...
In terms of what a student would see in the class?
It, what they would see in class. That's a hard, that's a hard question.
Looking at it from a student perspective, if I'm in grade two, am I going to see a major change in the services that are available to me when I move into grade three next year because of these shifts?
Well, what I will say to you is, these shifts will, students get their required services now, based on what's in their IEPs, and that's how those services are, and they will still get those required services in their IEPs next year. So, not a reduction in services, how that may be delivered, when it is, possibly, you know, if we get to a schedule where we have the blocks, I think you're going to see probably a lot more ability to see those teachers on a regular basis. But some schools at the elementary will have more inclusion teachers, some will have less, and it's typically a half or a half. We added in the budget an inclusion teacher as part of this process, and the idea was to move two up. So, so two for two-hundred-and-ninety students, and that's, whoever have IEPs out of that two-hundred-and-ninety students, and I don't have that calculation in front of me, but...
Okay. So then, would it be a fair statement to say that the impacts are primarily to, and again, I'm only, I'm only talking about students, because I am very, I understand the special schedule has a massive impact on teachers, I'm only talking about the students, is the high school Latin program moving, being eliminated, that one teacher moving down to the middle school and expanding world arts? Are there any other, from a student perspective, student-facing impacts?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, understandable.
I just, I wanted to make sure because of the, just because of the way that, and that makes total sense, when you look at the budget pieces, how the, it comes out to being a net, final net change of zero because of some of the other things, but I, I really want to make sure we're able to accurately explain this. So, thank you.
Sure.
If I, thank you, Joan, those are really good questions, and I think, you know, this narrative that we pieced together, it was shaped through questions from BBC and the Finance Commission, and from their perspectives, we wanted them to understand the movement. But I hear your point, and that is why I'm, like, always asking about the spreadsheet, sorry, Sean, because, for example, with the Latin position, if any of us wanted to go into the spreadsheet line by line, where would the movement of a world language teacher at the high school show up to a world language teacher at the Coakley? Because that becomes a different line, right?
Yeah, I mean, we...
Because that's what you're asking, like, how do we track it?
Well, I'm asking for parents in town, we care about the budget being balanced, but we also, I mean, we could also balance the budget by firing everybody and buying ten-thousand reams of paper, right?
Yeah.
Hey, we reduced the budget! But that's not what parents want for their kids, so that's, there's two things here, is, what's the budget implication, but then what's, what is, what's the impact to our students?
Of course, of course, and, but then taking one step farther, as a step, as a school committee, it is our job to know these line items.
Yeah, that's my question.
So, tonight, when we approve the budget, when we debate and approve the budget, although we're approving it at that bottom-line number, it is what's in front of us tonight. So if moving forward, for whatever reason, line items change, that means to come back to us, because that would then not be the line-by-line budget that we voted on. So for just the world language position, is it, is it a movement in a line?
So, in this case, this budget is by the function and the org number, so when you look at the high school, there's seventy-five-point-six FTEs, and you, you kind of need both the line-by-line and the description, because we're going down one Latin teacher, but we're going up one freshman academy.
Right.
So you don't see that level here, but that's why we have the budget message and, you know, accompanying things, we'll, we hope to have, like, a budget book that gives some of these narratives before we go to town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Ideally, we build that, and we can have a book that we have each year that has some descriptions of the things.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we could think about alternative ways to show the budget, that's almost getting down to the job description granular level, and the chart of accounts we have here doesn't get to the granular level of specific types of teachers at the high school, it just gives you a line for the high school teachers.
Right. So, so in this budget right now for FY26, there's seventy-five-point-six FTEs at the high school and sixty-nine-point-two at the Coakley, if I go a couple lines up?
Yes, yes.
But that is already inclusive of the world language teacher moving, right?
Yes.
So, at the building level, the principals have access to a budget within their building, right?
Yes.
So, in the past, Karen has given us access to those worksheets. It is the budget, it is within the purview of the school committee to have access to it. It might be helpful if we see that, like, not for tonight's vote, but just for moving forward.
I mean, we were talking, we were thinking about doing a by-building budget, but again, you only have one high school and you only have one middle school, so unless you got down to the job description detail, you're still only going to see, it just so happens that we're adding a freshman academy and subtracting a Latin, so it nets out to zero.
I see what you're saying.
The middle school, you would see, you know, again, we're not showing all the individual art, music, PE, our chart of accounts doesn't go that, to that level of the actual jobs.
Mm-hmm.
So you kind of need both the narrative, or you need, you know, the budget message and some of these tables that we've shown that show that, you know? Or we could do something with job description and try to show staffing movement by type of position, or something like that.
I don't know how to classify what I'm looking for. I don't want access to all of that, but what I, but what I want to know is things like, I know you do, but if, if, if you're going to make a change that is going to impact how students get educated in any way, I want to, like, that's the type of stuff, like, for me, it's about the, it's about the impact on students and parents, right? Like, Latin's a good example of that, like, you know, yes, technically, you could have just brought that budget forth to us and, and not talked about that, but like, that would have, so what I'm saying is, as we continue to move forward and as our budget situation continues to unfold, because I think realistically, right, it will, as the DOE moves and the funds get shif, sif, siphoned? Shifted, shifted to different places for allocation, right? We're going to probably have to continue to make decisions. And I guess what I'm saying is, I want to make sure that we're getting those decisions presented to us, both in the budget way, and also in, in a way that it's easily accessible to understand the impact.
So, Joan...
Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
In my, in my budget message, I actually put down the two programmatic implications of the whole thing.
You also have in your budget message a couple of spots where it says, like, this will continue to be fluid.
Well, there are, there are some other things, right? We're going to be talking about coordination at the elementary level for, you know, all those kind of things at some point, we're just not there yet until we know about more.
And so what I just want, what I want to say is, before those moves become final, can we get both the budgetary and the impact presented to us for approval?
You, you will, you will. And there's no, there's no budgetary impact of those.
Yeah.
We do go that way, but I think I shared last meeting, too, I absolutely will share those with you prior.
Yeah.
You'll have those.
Yeah, like, if we need to add, I don't know, let's say we get a mandate that says we need to add, I don't know, twenty-seven police officers or something, and then, you know, you, you're like, we're adding twenty-seven police officers at the high school, and look, it's budget-neutral, but that's because you have let go of twenty-seven teachers? Like, don't just share the budget-neutral piece of it, like, talk about, and so, and some of this, I think, is us as a committee getting to understand how you guys present information, and understanding how we typically receive information and, and put it out. So, like I said, there was no, there's no accusation of malfeasance here, it's just, I think it would be helpful if we also have with these budget things, like, here's the impact, like, a little budget lines, a budget line, a little bulleted list of, you know, this to this, this to this, this is what it means. That's all. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So Mr. Love, at this time, if we approve this budget tonight, there's two possible points forward where something may have to come back for FY26 as I'm understanding it right now. One is if federal funding changes, we've already talked about this a lot, but if we are not able to take those two positions into the Medicaid or if town meeting doesn't approve our request for the funding, that we have to find that amount in the operating budget. So that would obviously come back to us.
Yes.
And then the other piece is as you are continuing to work with the administration team and the unions on restructuring special education and figuring out the curriculum coordination for the Coakley. If those moves further impact the budget in any way, you will bring that back to us.
So I, I, I don't think those moves will impact the budget, but I will bring it back to you because I think you should know any changes like that.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I, if it, yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think it'll impact the budget and I don't think it'll impact the, when I say that, I mean, it could be better, you know, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
But to Joan's point, if it required like a teaching position to be swapped for something as you're negotiating that, you, that, that would definitely come back to us? Cause that is not in the budget that we're approving.
Yeah, it is not, it is not. Cause I'm not, I'm not, we're not, we're not there yet with that conversation.
I just don't ever want to be surprised by parents saying, hey, you, you cut this. And I'm like, uh, actually our budget's, this, like, what are you talking about? Our budget's the same and yeah.
I see what you're saying Joan. And having said that, I think, and I think if we, like many other districts right now, we're facing a steeper situation. That would be really vital. But I think you guys have been, I just want to say that I think it's been discussed and communicated pretty clearly along the way about what student facing impacts are here, but.
It was just cause I saw reductions.
Yeah, no, I understand.
You know what I mean? And then like, and that triggered something for me.
If this was a worse situation, we would want it really crystal, like, you know, clear.
Anne Marie, if we could just, you know, I do want to honor and recognize all the feedback that we've received about the Latin program and the Latin FTE. And Mr. Love, we're still at the same place that we were last week and the meeting before, where if we kept that FTE and we would have to find another FTE elsewhere, correct?
That's correct.
And we're still in the same place where the options on the table are an English or science teacher at the high school or an elementary teacher at the, at the old ham.
Yes.
So there's been no new developments as you further assess that.
Not at this time.
And would you just please speak, I know you're still investigating it with Dr. Munoz and, and Dr. Galligan, but could you just tell us where are you in looking at potential offerings in some fashion for Latin next year?
Yeah, I mean, we're still right now focusing on the possibility of Edmentum, which is an online program for Latin. And I know that is not the best scenario for everyone, but it does give an opportunity for kids who are currently in Latin one, Latin two, or Latin three, to continue on for an additional year for next year. Obviously the kids who are in Latin one, because they require two years of foreign language or a language, they would be able to finish that. And then we're not sure about the, you know, if kids in Latin two or three would want to take that, but that would be the model right now. We have vetted a few other programs. That seems, they were still online for the most part. And then some did have a, a personal component, but those were, I think upwards of $60,000 as well. Whereas the one that we are looking at is roughly $8,000 or so to cover for next year. So.
And would there be a piece with the Edmentum? If students needed support or guidance, would they, would that be available to them in some fashion?
My understanding is they have access to a teacher within the program that they can access.
Through the online program?
Yep.
And I know you had spoken before about trying to preserve the club and, and having somebody still lead that club. The other concern that has been brought forth to us is around like the AP exam. Is an AP level available in Edmentum for Latin?
I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah, please sir. What was it? Ed U C R, my apologies. Thank you for that, first of all.
Okay. Oh, okay. It was, it was just brought to us from the community that, that we were losing an AP option and the AP exam option, but that's not currently in the course selection. None of the students next year requested it in the course selection. Okay. And then Mr. Love, two meetings ago, when he wore away for your conference, Dr. Munoz was guiding us through, I had mentioned that through the feedback that we are getting from the community, there seems to have been concerns brought to our attention around the benefits of the Latin curriculum that perhaps should have been all along embedded in our ELA curriculum. And I had asked JJ to put it on his, on his radar to look at our ELA curriculum. If there are things that all of our students should be getting, I, I would hope that we're looking at ways that they're getting them.
Well, we are getting closer and closer looking at ELA for our curriculum refresh. So that would be a great time to have a conversation about that.
And the refresh is the whole district, not just elementary?
Uh, well, we, we surveyed teachers across the district and we're, we're analyzing surveys now and we're going to share with principals and then get a team together.
Okay.
Uh, cause the question was, do we do ELA or math? Cause they're both back to back years for next year's and we don't want to put elementary through that. And so we definitely think that the elementary is probably leaning more towards ELA. But the middle school and math will have to have a conversation, or the middle school and high school have to have a conversation with the team.
Okay. Okay.
But we can certainly look at that regardless.
Okay. Yeah, there's just been a lot of really valuable feedback that has come in. And even though I, I feel unfortunately I still have to support the reduction because of where we are with the budget, there's been a lot of valid feedback raising concerns with access and curriculum across the board. And I, I don't want us to ignore it and not that we are, but there's been very valuable feedback brought to our attention. And then if I could just speak from that pragmatic perspective again, could we possibly find a way to keep it in this year? Probably yes. But then that means next year is that position and one more, because there's a compounding factor to our budget. So for every position that we would find a way to keep in this year, it doubles next year with an FTE that has to be removed. And just as a reminder to everybody, as I shared last week, the Finance Commission did request that as we soon start to work on FY27, we build our budget on the assumption that there is no free cash to be utilized. So that's about $4 million already that we have to start off building our budget. And I take that very seriously and sadly.
Can I just have a point of clarification on that? That exercise is going to be the level services compared to a no free cash, correct?
Well, I mean, we'll have to do, I will have to do a level service budget. There's no question, right? Like, but we'll also look at a no free cash.
It'll be the, this as well, okay.
The worst case.
I think I have to bring you both.
Yeah, it'll be a level services versus the worst case scenario.
Yeah.
I mean, again, we know, we have some free cash still left over moving from this year. We know we did not spend it all, but we know that just under maybe 50% of town government was not in favor of, of using that. There was a very strong voice of not even using free cash this year, even though, and, and as we know, it was kind of a, it's something you really can't argue when you have that much free cash sitting there and saying, let's just cut services. So, uh, you know, cool, it has prevailed in that regard, but if we were to, we are not going to see the same influx of free cash. As a reminder, I know you all know this, we've talked about the sednausian, but I just want to remind the public again that, you know, we will have some left over from this year into next year. We do always get a certain amount of free cash each year, but it is certainly not going to be the windfall that we saw this year. And once all of these funds are exhausted, we are in a pla- we are in a very dire place, especially if, you know, a lot of people have talked override, there's a lot of pros and cons for override. I have my personal opinions on whether one would pass or not and we, you know, we can only go on these, on what we have in front of us today.
Part of what we are trying to do, it feels like, is to educate the public on what is at risk. What is on the, what is on the chopping block, as it were, if we don't use free cash in terms of what level services cause, what increases implicate and so.
Yeah.
That's, I think where that exercise is, but we will get to see both so that people can understand.
Yeah, I mean, I've shared from the beginning too, that I'm always going to present you with a budget that I think is required to provide services for kids that they need. You're going to, you have to get that, you know, and I think that's, that's what you look at. And then we say, and if it was no free cash, this is my, this is what it would look like.
I mean, if I, if I had to guess, I think there'll be many iterations of the budget at that point. Obviously there's going to be your level services, there's going to be one with no free cash and then there's going to be the one in between, but.
We're going to start tomorrow on this one.
We're ba- we're basically back to 2017 and 2018. And I would not be surprised if ultimately, if not for FY27, FY28, we go to town, town meeting with two budgets like we did in 18, right? 18 was when we said, here is if we get the override and here is if we don't. I, I'm very distraught over the fact that we are going to go through this process again, but I think we are. And I think back to last year with Matt Wells, he thought that we were going to be this year with where the town is telling us we're going to be next year. He, he warned us last year. Cause what he did not have any way of predicting last March and May was that amount of free cash. But we were told a year ago that this was coming.
Yeah, if we didn't have the free cash this year, we'd be having a much different conversation. We'd, we'd probably, I, I'd be running away to Tahiti right now just to never show my face again in this town because it would be that bad.
I have a quick question, which may seem really random, but what's the size of our incoming freshman class?
Yes, Darcy, give me a minute.
I think they're about two.
David's looking at it. Let's say it's always around two fifty.
Two fifty.
Is it 273 this year?
I can get it for you. Hang on one second.
That's good, that's just ballpark, okay.
They, they've been a bigger.
Listen, this is the one thing Desi does good.
That's my class size, that's, we're getting kind of back around to.
Okay.
And now it's not going to load.
But they are bigger than the outgoing seniors, I think.
So this year it would be the rising freshman for next year at 272. The senior class this year is 246.
Thank you. I'm going to pull up on my screen, but then it'll be anywhere.
You ever have those questions? Google Desi Dart data. It's one of the best data tools they've come up with.
It's also in our enrolled graduate folder.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, it's a good question. All good questions.
Student impact and roles and things, okay.
Any other discussions, anything else we need to go over?
I mean, not that it impacts the, the motion that we need to make, but just the budget cycle's continuous. It doesn't, it doesn't end. And as a subcommittee, we're still working on things. The next big step will get ready for the town meeting info session and then town meeting and of course the budget book based off of tonight's vote. And I do believe that the BBC and the Finance Commission, I know they say it every year, but I think they really mean it, that this year we need to go right into the next budget cycle. And I think we'll be working all summer long on FY27 and, and five-year projections across the town.
Agreed. Okay. Um, there are no more questions. Are there any motions on the final FY26 budget?
I'd like to make a motion that's slightly different than the wording in our packet, if that is okay. So I would like to request, or to approve the FY26 Norah Public School budget as presented to us this evening in the line by line in the amount of $65,292,117.
As move by Teresa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other discussion? Joan?
Sorry. Um, I'm just going to make a statement. It's not really a discussion. I am going to vote for this budget because I will honor the previous vote of the school committee because this is in line with the tier one reductions. However, I will not, I'm re reminding you of the hill that I'm going to die on when we have to make more cuts, which is, oh, you weren't here. I have a new hill to die on. Um, I will not make any, I, I will not vote and I will strenuously object to anything else that impacts academic programs until I see equity across the fee structure and other cuts that are not student and teacher facing, that don't impact curriculum. So that's my hill. You know how I am on hills and that I'll die, will die on. I'll vote for this, but I won't do, I won't vote again for anything else until I see that equity, until I see literally everything else, even if that means we're not taking, I say we, I don't get paid, but we're not taking raises or those types of things because we cannot gut our general ed program again. Now I'm done.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes five to zero. Thank you very much. All right. So we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the superintendent evaluation. So I am on here to lead this. So what you should have received this morning, an email from, um, from Lisa with the composite that David and Kate put together for the superintendent evaluation. So, uh, this was also posted to this website this morning for the public to view. So as is our policy, Desi, um, rules, we need to go through this and actually have the discussion on any, on each of these items and vote on our ratings and rankings. Um, I know I'm doing a really bad job of describing it.
Can I comment on this first?
Yes, definitely. David, as you put together the composite, please, you feel free to.
So I, I mean, first thank you to Joan because she had, I think I, one of the years I thought we did a similar thing that Kate and I did where we split it. But thank you for keeping the documents. Kate did most of the hard work, so thank you for that. Teresa, I think to the question that's in your email, if Kate just shares all of that, you will have access to that.
The individual line by line?
Yep, the individual line by line ones. So what I did, and I know I had took the directive from last time of, you know, the rankings and then similar language. Because with the open response, obviously there are five of us and you get to write in those open responses and, and sort of do that process. I tried, like, I, I tried to look for the themes and best summarize those themes because a lot of times people were saying similar things, but in a much different way. So just again, I went through for each goal, what the rating was and tried to do just like a, an executive narrative summary of the comments. And I think I did this almost correctly where, you know, I did whatever the, the numbers were, the one I highlighted. There was one where it was, it was actually like a tie. It was two, two, one. So nobody got three. So I know that's one we'll have, sort of have to talk about and dig into. But just sort of that was the process and what I did as instructed by all of you.
Thank you very much for that. I think I want, I do want to, before we start discussing the actual rankings, I do want to remind, because I did actually look through this myself and I noticed there was some where, for example, significant progress and things like that were the comment. And I wanted to point out that because of the goal setting timeline, because of when we started it and when we were coming in, and having this discussion in March, when Mr. Love just really started in earnest, I mean, I know it was July 1, but like really started with everything in the school in September, that most of the goals were written to that effect of significant progress towards, significant progress towards. So I just want to remind us all as we discuss that, that in case that was why somebody might have said significant progress towards, because the goal, you know, the overarching goal, you're right, had not been met. The goal technically had been met because it had been made significant progress towards. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So what you're saying to everyone out there is that significant process, significant progress is like that you've met the standard?
Correct. Because we were coming in at a very odd timing with this and now we'll get on the regular schedule and track. And because there was only, but by the time we voted on these, it was like, what, four months? Yeah. So that was not a very long time, but we wanted to make sure we got on the correct path and did have an actual goal setting. And so I just want to remind the committee of that before we start voting on actual rankings this evening. Does that make sense?
Can I just add one more small piece of context?
Absolutely.
It's been three years since we have done a superintendent evaluation. And it is a process that we have to follow by Desi. We don't have a whole lot of flexibility of how this is conducted or the rubric that we use. And we are required by law to do it in an open meeting, although I don't know of any other profession anywhere that you do an evaluation in an open meeting in front of everybody. It's not my favorite process.
Very exciting for me too.
But we, we are following the law. We are following Desi. We are following the rubric. And as we go through what David compiled, there are four goals that we rate. And then there are four standards and under those standards, there are indicators that we rate. And then there is an overall summative at the end of, of performance and then also impact on student learning. And then all of these things, once we vote tonight and finalize, it goes and is reported to Desi. And the rigorous standard that Desi expects of superintendents is proficient. So this is not like an A, B, C, D, F. Exemplary by design is supposed to be really, really hard to achieve. And proficient in any area is like, you're solid, you're doing everything that you're rigorously supposed to be doing. And then if this comes up in our discussion, I know they have one area called needs improvement. But in all the MASC training I've been through, they always say that is equivalent to developing. And I wish they would just call it developing, but, but they don't. But just as we're having a discussion, so the community has a little bit more context of why we're using certain terms and we're not making them up. We're required to use these rankings.
Yep. Which would explain why we only had about four months from goal setting to, to now, because we are required to do this by, by law. Okay. So I think then if anybody has any other questions or concerns, we can just go into the different, we can start with goals.
Do you want to open up the document? It didn't get, it didn't get linked to our agenda, but it's in our inboxes and it's on the website.
Yeah, so we, we weren't sure if we wanted to project it or do we want it- Yeah. So we, we weren't sure if we wanted to project it or do we want, but that would be helpful if we projected it.
I mean, it's on the website. People have access to it.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know. Just as we're going through it, it might help the community if they know what we're referencing.
It's the same one that I got, right?
Yep. Should be. Same PDF you got.
Let me just go to the website just in case, because mine's up.
Kate disappeared too.
Yeah. I was going to say you both left as.
I know.
We're getting started.
Yeah, like we did the background work. Now you do the rest.
I mean, I guess while Tim's looking for that, we'll further kind of just, okay, we got it up. I was just saying, I was going to further explain to the community just, you know, how we kind of split this up in our, in our committee. And, you know, we, just so that the community does understand that each of us has filled out these, these goal evaluations, they were, they were taken by David and compiled into this one composite document. So in case that wasn't clear with what we were describing before. So what you will see, so for example, we'll go through goal one, which was the district improvement effective entry plan goal. And you can see here, overall rating was met with one exceeds. So four people out of the committee, four committee members gave a rating of met and one committee member gave a rating of exceeds. What I'm actually going to do, just for clarity, is I'm going to pull up the goal doc so I can have the further details. Sorry, it might take me a second.
Yeah. Emery, if I could ask, once we finalize this, on the document, if we could just carry over the goal language, that, that way it's all on one document. That'll be helpful.
Yeah, no, exactly. I think, I think that, that was how we had published the final in the past, for sure. Sorry. I should have been more prepared with having that open because I knew I want that to look at.
So we have to go through step by step and discuss it and make sure we all agree. Do you want me to read the goal? I have it.
Do you have it open?
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind while I find it and open it.
No worries. So goal number one, a district improvement goal, is that substantial progress toward effective entry and direction setting. By late spring, the district will have broad recognition by key stakeholder groups about the district's most critical needs and will have a widely understood process underway to identify the strategies and goals that will address those needs most effectively and the measures that will be used to assess progress. And again, what we needed to rate Mr. Luff on is either did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded.
Great. Thank you so much. And so as, like I said earlier, I just, that was why, this is exactly why I made the reminder about the significant progress too, because that exact first line of the goal was substantial progress toward the effective entry direction. So we can open this up to discussion, but four, I think this might be pretty obvious, but there were four of us who said met and one who said exceeded. I would assume, should never assume, but that our overall committee rating would be met in this case.
Point of, Claire, are we motioning for each?
Yeah.
How do you want us to proceed?
We probably should.
We probably should.
At the end, yeah.
I would like to make a motion that for goal one, we go with met.
Move by Joan. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Seconded by David. Any discussion? Wonderful. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is five to zero.
And just as we go through this too, we are allowed to motion if you wanted anything added as a comment or narrative.
Yep.
So that can also be part of our dialogue.
I do think this captures it.
Don't look at me. Look at everybody else.
You know, just, and just for the public, just to read, you know, into the record, you know, that Mr. Luff has met his obligations, made effective progress with the goal he set, which is what the goal was, is to make substantial progress toward, especially around the entry plan noted by at least by two members that he has done this and has been timely with deliverables associated with the goals. Okay. All right. So we'll go on to goal two.
Do you want me to read it or did you find it?
I finally got it open. Which is a district improvement and student learning goal. So goal two was substantial progress toward maintaining momentum during the transition. Keep the district moving forward during this year's transition in leadership by working with principals and other district leaders to ensure that meaningful progress is made on critical district and school go, goals. So we did have the same, the same ratings options as Teresa just read to you. And in this case, we had four members with met and one member of one significant progress towards. I think this is another one where with four of us in favor of, yes, Joan?
I'd like to make the motion.
Yep.
That goal two be met.
Second. Move by Joan, seconded by Kate. And if I could just say, Emery, I, I'm a tough evaluator. I was the one that said significant progress. However, I also acknowledged in there that the way we set up the goals and the rubric weren't quite in alignment. So the clarification that you mentioned earlier, you're always laughing at me. The clarification that you made earlier, I, I referenced in my individual feedback that I wanted clarification. And if the rest of my colleagues said met, I would absolutely support that.
I am happy to do all the evaluations of the administrators before this meeting, you know, if you want me to. I'm sure they'd be happy about it.
It took me a second too, as I was doing it. I was like reading it and it was like, I will have this done by. And I'm like, oh, right. That's why we said significant progress toward.
You're definitely on, on progress for what you still said was, was coming forward. And I, and I think I mentioned that in my.
That's what all of my comments are. I'm like, well, yeah, this is on track. This is on track. Yep. Okay. So that was moved by Joan, seconded by Kate. Any other discussion on this one? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Kate too. So that's five to zero. Okay. So the third goal was the professional practice goal. So goal three was substantial progress toward completion of year one of the new superintendent induction program. Develop skills in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership by actively engaging in the first year of the new superintendent induction program. So again, same ratings as before. And this one, goal three, we did have a split here as well, where we had four committee members met and one exceeds. With some comments that the school committee members felt that Tim quote has met all the crimes of his induction program and has met his commitment to the program. Joan.
I'd like to make a motion that the rating for goal three is met.
Move by Joan.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Any discussion?
Uh, in the comments, could we just shift from Tim to Superintendent Luff?
Absolutely.
Oops.
No, we're all on that. On a very close basis at this point.
I just, like, it's a, it's a.
No, the document.
It's a formal document.
Absolutely.
You use the person's?
Yes, absolutely. But because it's a more formal document, I think. Yeah.
Teresa. Okay. So flip side from what I just said in the last goal, I'm still a very strict evaluator, but I was the outlier that said exceeded. And I just want to publicly, you're looking at me.
There's a reason that it's a composite.
I know, I know. But this is supposed to be part of the process. So following the process. I'll still support the majority, but I want to acknowledge why I said exceed it, because I'm not sure everybody knows. So I've had a lot of one-on-ones with Mr. Luff and also a lot of interaction through the budget subcommittee. And Tim, what I have found is that you're not just invested in meeting the goals of the new superintendent induction program. I really think you're taking it a next step. And I think that they should listen to what you're asking them and redesign their program. Because you're coming back and you're, you're saying, not only this is what I'm learning, but how do we make it work for Norwood? And you and I last week had a conversation around how they were really focused on the academics. And obviously, that's super important. But you had shared with me, you were asking for their questions around why isn't the program supporting superintendents more operationally and from a budgetary perspective. So that is why in my individual, you'll read that I said exceed it. And I did want to publicly acknowledge because that's not something I, I don't think my colleagues will know.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is five to zero. All right. So then for the fourth goal. Scroll down. Oops, did I miss it? Hold on, hold on, hold on. Lost it.
Oh, you're there.
Ah! Oh, district improvement goal. Joan, may I read it?
Yeah, please. Okay. So goal four, district improvement goal, is complete the comprehensive elementary study analysis, decide upon the next stages for an elementary model, and take necessary steps to implement that model for the Norah Public Schools.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. We were looking at the same version and admit the blurb is missing from both of them, which is very interesting. So thank you. Okay. So in this case, we had a little bit more of a split, but still, majority of committee members actually said exceeded for this one and two said met. With some comments from the school committee, members highlighted that Mr. Luff came to something that was already in progress, was able to effectively guide it to its completion. Some areas, members highlighted were engagement with the community when making decisions around the elementary schools configuration, use of data, clarity of information presented, and effective communication throughout the process that we managed.
Kate. I just, I just want to speak to the difficulty, I think, one has in jumping on a moving train that is a fast train. It's sort of a volatile train, a controversial train. Analogy is terrible so far. But Superintendent Luff was able to do that and make improvements. He, we were missing sort of a focused central office leadership. He was able to sort of get an understanding of what was going on, stabilize the need for that guidance. And then well, with, what's the name of the thought exchange? Get better quality information from the community. And then his output as well was multi-tiered in terms of video content, in terms of his messaging. And this type of project really benefited from that. So I, I, I would make a motion that we go with the majority and exceeded, with exceeded.
Motion by Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joan. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So five to zero, exceeded. Okay. So then that brought us down to the overall rating for the district improvement goals was a little split on this one. So we will need some discussion, where we had two met, two exceeded, and one significant progress.
So I guess my only comment would be based on the fact that it's, there are four, and three of those ratings were met, with some significant. And the last one was the one that was exceeded. But I think tie goes to met. And then we should settle on met.
So it's actually not all four goals. It's just the two district goals. So the professional development goal and the student learning goal, that, that's not part of this.
No, I know that. But it's like, there are four listed, right? There are four, how I do it, four little sections that we provided rankings on, or three? And then it goes to the overall, overall rating.
No, it's only the overall rating between the two district improvement goals. Because we had more than one district improvement goal, we now have to take the two of them combined and give a rating that goes to Desi.
Which two were they?
The elementary study and the.
Can you go back up?
The district improvement student learning goal. Right?
The first one was two.
The first one.
So there's three of them.
I think goal two was really a student learning.
Two was, the two were the student learning that we focused on.
Okay. It was, okay. Because it was called district improvement.
So it's the effective entry and direction, direction setting, and then the elementary study. We have to now come up with one rating for them combined.
So you had, then overall, you had four mets. What was the bottom one with two mets, that six mets and four exceeds? So I think it's, it's probably.
I think the point still stands.
Yeah, the point still stands.
And even with that, I would say, like, and this is no knock to you, Tim, you did a great job stepping in. But, you know, like, elementary study was in process already, so not to weight it heavier, but the work that Tim did on his own was more the first goal that was for one. So it's the pleasure of the committee. It's just my.
What was your motion? That it was what?
That I would go met, overall.
I don't think you actually said motion two. Are you motioning two?
I would motion two.
Thank you.
Move the overall rating district improvement goals to met.
I have a second.
Joan, I'll give it to Joan. Joan, second. Any other discussion on that point? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that passes five to zero. All right. So then we move into the next section, which is the indicators. And I'm going to switch to my other. Am I in the right area? Sorry. Trying to go through different documents. Okay. That, no, that's the supplementary stuff. Got to go down a little more. No. Where'd it go? Oh my God, I'm dying here. Ah. Is that it? Yeah. I'm, I'm clearly like lost in my documents.
To read the indicator?
Yes.
IV.
The indicator, one B instruction. I'm having such a hard time finding these things.
Okay.
Oh, my document just looks funky.
This is why we just want to get it all on.
Yeah.
Indicator, IV.
It's indicator one.
Like my document is just.
This ensures the instructional practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work. Engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and level of readiness.
That's it? Okay. So.
I'll make a motion and provide context. We all voted.
We all voted. We all did proficient in this one.
Yep. I'll make the motion that we rate indicator one B in step two as proficient.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I'll take David. Any other discussion?
No, this, this is the section I was referencing earlier, where proficient is the expected, rigorous expectation. That's duplicate, but you know what I'm saying. It's the standard that is, the rigorous standard that is expected of a superintendent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's five to zero. Okay. So the next indicator was one D, evaluation, ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. So for this one, there was a bit of a split here, but majority proficient and two exemplary. Any discussion or motions on this one? Or do you want me to read the comments?
You got something, Joan?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that one of the things that I think contributes to this is it's really hard for a school committee to do this part of an evaluation because of the way and, and the rules around who, who school committee people can talk to and what we can talk to about. And one of the things I just want to commend him on is that he agreed to do a three sixty evaluation, which is not common for superintendents. And so what that means is that there, is that there's an opportunity for his direct reports to provide feedback on Tim directly to us that we can see. And that is not a normal thing for superintendents to do. And I'm pretty sure that your professional association advises you not to do that. But that actually allows us to get a clearer picture of what's going on from the direct reports. And that comes to us anonymously. So it is, there is a way for, for staff to let us know about how he's supporting them, how he's evaluating them, how those protocols are. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm not making a motion on the rating. I'm just making a comment.
I, I would just add to that, that it was actually, I thought it was very helpful.
Yeah.
Extremely helpful and, and productive. And in that way, it wasn't, you know, I'm sure if it was not structured well, it could have not gone well. But we were very committed to making this structured well and to work for everybody involved because it was, we felt it was that important.
So that's why it was exemplary, since we're, I'm following Teresa's lead now. That's part of the reason why it was exemplary, because it was, it is, it is not the norm of the professions of superintendents to be, to get that level of access that Tim essentially waived his rights by law so that we could do this evaluation in a better way. So.
Yeah, Emery, I was going to say the same thing. And the composite is good. I was just going to add the follow-through. So the three sixty was helpful. Several people mentioned setting expectations, but also then coming back to it and either, both in this area and a couple other spots, people mentioned following back up on what he said he would do.
As a strength, you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I know.
Just terrifying.
No, people were, people mentioned that and I.
Okay.
I think that was exemplary.
So you, you're, you wanted to add it, you're saying. You, you're motioning that we add to the comments?
Oh, um, I.
Or are you just offering the commentary?
I was just offering it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for which rating we should?
I'll make the motion for exemplary based on what I said, that will at least move us along to either do it or not.
I'll second for discussion. I did, I did rate proficient. I'll second for discussion. Um, I did, I did rate proficient, and I was looking at the rubric from D E S I that helps you what is proficient versus exemplary, and, um, I noted, and I do believe that probably next evaluation cycle, that exemplary will be achieved. The reason I stuck with proficient for now is because as we already indicated, we've only, with the timeline-
Yeah.
We haven't completed a full cycle, so I personally cannot yet say with confidence. I, I have hope and, and, uh, trust that'll end in a very strong fashion, but we haven't fully gone through that cycle yet of evaluation with everybody, so that is why I stuck with proficient.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, so Joan's motion is for exemplary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So that fails three to two?
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Did you say, do you want me to make the next one, or?
I'll make the motion that for indicator ID, um, we rate Superintendent Luft as proficient.
Second.
Right, David, any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four? Aye, okay.
Aye.
I'm, for the sake of, for the sake of unanimity-
I was just checking.
Yeah.
I, I always wait to check on Kate, she's usually about a half a second.
What are you saying?
I said that with the most loving heart.
It's after nine P M.
I said, I'm saying I'm really gonna miss you. Um, okay, so that, those were the two indicators, um, for the, um, instructional leadership rating. So overall, um, we gave, as a committee, uh, four to one, four proficient, one exemplary, and the overall leadership rating.
I'll make the motion that the overall leadership rating is proficient.
Moved by Joan.
I'm sorry, instructional leadership.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by David. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero. Okay, so the next set of indicators is for, uh, management and operations. Um, we chose indicators two A and two D, so for two A, uh, environment develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. Um, so for that, um, for the committee, we were majority with proficient, with four to one, committee member exemplary.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to, um-
I'm just gonna keep pointing to Joan.
Yep, to indicator two A, uh, is proficient.
Moved by Joan.
Second.
Seconded by David. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero. Uh, okay, the second indicator was two D, law, ethics, and policies. Understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines. So for this one, uh, we had a split as well, three committee members with proficient and two with exemplary.
So I'm gonna make a motion for exemplary, even though that was in the minority?
Okay, moved by Joan. Is there a second for-
Second.
Seconded by David. Discussion?
I'd like to explain. So, as a member of the policy subcommittee, um, Mr. Luft has brought a tremendous amount of knowledge, um, to those discussions, especially in a shifting, uh, educational law environment where things are changing, um, and I have, I, I feel that he is operating way above what a new superintendent would be able to do, what a typical su, new superintendent should be able to do with regards to managing the shifting landscape and keeping the focus on keeping as Norwood as strong as possible.
Any other discussion?
I am just going back to the D E S I rubric for a second.
I saw you looking for something, which was, I was pausing slightly.
I am sorry, Joan, this is how my brain works, um, 'cause I had indicated proficient, but that I felt that this was an area in which he would soon be exemplary, um, and the reason for right now that I feel I'm gonna stay with proficient is there is still a learning curve, um, with the policies in Norwood and, um, the CBA is in Norwood, um, but solidly proficient, soon to be exemplary is how I feel.
I'm gonna counter back and say that the union, union, it's not union A, uh, it's after nine for me too, unit, unit A.
Mm-hmm.
The unit A contract wasn't closed until after Mr. Luft came, and so that's a pretty impressive feat for a new superintendent, to form strong partnerships, gain the trust of the union, um, and allow that contract negotiation to be settled if, so, that's both a compliment to the union, but also a compliment to Mr. Luft. Um, so that's why I'm gonna, that, to me, that demonstrates, like, in, in another year, he's not gonna have the opportunity to do that level of whole-union kind of-
Mm-hmm.
Ethics. I mean, there's gonna be, there's obviously tons of conversations happening with the union, but, yeah, that's it, I'm done.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a fair point. I, I would anticipate in the next year, though, there's plenty of opportunities to help us navigate law.
Yep.
Um, I will say for this one specifically, I, I, I rated proficient, but I definitely waffled back and forth on this one, just because I know, um, the breadth of knowledge around the legal landscape that Mr. Luft has, and especially around the policies, and then just the commitment to actually making sure that they're implemented, and the, uh, awareness and of, of policies whenever making decisions. Um, it's always at the forefront, and I really truly appreciate that. Um, so I did actually, I, I, I rated proficient, but I was definitely kinda unsure on that one.
Yeah, I get the timeline thing for sure, but like, we sort of had to wedge this timeline, and it's like, the performance has, especially here, uh, it's there, you know, it, with this timeline. The proof is in the pudding, so to speak. Oh, boy.
Could be like proficient point five?
I know, right?
I mean, I just, I, I go back to like, the title line changes that had to happen that Mr. Luft guided us through, right? He's bringing forth, uh, um, additional, uh, policy this evening. There have been policies that have been changing, and I think this is probably a unique viewpoint from the policy subcommittee to hear in our discussions how it's not only this is the policy, but this is how the policy is gonna impact Norwood, and here's what I think we should do so that we are in the best place possible. And I think that comes from, uh, his deep knowledge of educational law. And I'll just remind everyone, he just graduated with his, is it an executive law and policy, executive-
Executive Juris Doctorate.
An executive Juris Doctorate. I don't know what else you want him to do around educational law, folks.
Sorry, let's take a-
Sorry. I, I will stop arguing, but I obviously feel pretty strongly about this one.
Um, I'm just looking back at, at Tim's goal document. Where specifically did we call out this indicator? So we called it out under management and operation-
Yep.
Which is what we're talking about now.
Correct.
Was it called out in any of the goals additionally?
Uh, yes, under goal one.
Under goal one, okay.
Actually, I think it was under all of them, two. It is listed under goal, uh, through, I think it's listed under all of them. Nope, just one, two, and three.
One, two, three.
Okay. Any other discussion?
The motion is exemplary?
Motion is exemplary. Uh, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four, uh, opposed?
Aye.
So that passes four to one.
Okay. Good luck getting, Joan.
Alright, um, so, the next set, um, oh, I'm sorry, hold on, duh, 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 duh. So the overall, did we just say that? No, I'm onto the overall rating, sorry. Um, so the overall rating under management and operations, um, was the committee, uh, majority for proficient and one exemplary.
I'd like to make a motion that the overall rating for management and operations be proficient.
Second.
Moved by Joan, seconded by David. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Oops, sorry, did I, sorry?
I, I just wanted to say that, um, Mr. Luft, you are extremely proficient in this area, and I really appreciate, um, what you bring to the table with all management and operations, so thank you.
Yeah, for me, this is where I listen to my colleagues about, it's only been like three months, so.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So five to zero.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you had the first.
I was gonna say, I'm in the field, I'm not gonna be that soft.
Um, okay, so then that brings us to the last, um, family and community engagement. Um, so for this one, there is indicator three C and three B. Um, so three C, communications engages in regular two-way culturally, culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. Um, so under that indicator, we had, uh, three committee members with exemplary and two with proficient.
Move to rate as exemplary.
Okay, moved by Kate.
Second.
Seconded by David. Discussion? Gave it a good pregnant pause.
Yeah, this, this one for me, I'm just gonna say, I think you're doing a great job, but I, this, this is where I agree with my colleagues, it's only been three months.
Yeah, I was proficient also, but again, proficient is not bad.
Yeah.
And as being somebody who, like, personally always wants the As too, this is like, not saying that it's not an A, um, but a, there's been many amazing initiatives and strategies. Um, I would continue, I encourage them to continue, um, but I-
Right.
I will probably stay with my proficient for now.
I can't imagine you would pull back and stop, you know, cat providing translations or stop your communications, but yeah, that's, right, you don't, there's a cliff to fall off there, I suppose. Go exemplary.
Alright, any other discussion? The re, the motion is for exemplary. Alright, all those in favor? Aye, so there's two. All opposed?
Somebody switched into the phone.
So three opposed, okay.
So I'll motion for indicator, um, what, three C? Is that where we're at, three C?
Yep.
Um, for rating as-
Oh, sorry, three B. Three, oh, no, three C, yeah, three C.
Communication, uh, for rating as proficient.
I'll second.
Okay, so, uh, true, uh, moved by Teresa, seconded by David. Any other discussion?
Hang on.
Yep.
You lost me. Where are we?
Three C communication.
Family and community engagement.
For those of you who can't see this document, it's just a lot of, duh, 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 okay.
We're gonna, yeah, I think, we'll, we'll kinda reconfigure the final that ends up getting posted to make sure it's all very clear.
On a screen for elementary school kids.
Yeah.
For my old eyes.
The tiny little Chromebook. Um, okay, so motion on the table is for proficient. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes five to zero. Um, okay, so then that brings us to indicator three B, um, which is sharing and responsibility, sharing responsibility, um, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community. Um, so in this case, we had a unanimous five to zero proficient.
Motion to approve.
Ooh, second.
By David, seconded by Joan. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So five to zero. Um, and then the overall family rate and community engagement rating, uh, four proficient, one exemplary.
Motion, uh, to approve as proficient?
Second.
Moved by David, seconded by Kate. Any discussion?
If I could just motion to add a comment, um, if everybody agrees, I, I would just like to add that the communication, not just within the school committee, but, or the school community, but the broad community and our town counterparts. I, I would like recognition for what Tim has done there.
Can I accept that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Great.
Um, so, move-
To approve, to move to approve as proficient with the addition of?
Um, that we recognize Superintendent Luft's-
And community.
Uh, communication with the broad community and our general government counterparts.
Sweet.
And, uh, Kate, second, you are seconding that friendly amendment, great. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So five to zero. Okay, and finally, um, professional, I have too many tabs open. Professional culture. So the indicators we chose here were, uh, four D and four E. Um, so four D is continuous learning, develops and nurtures a culture of, in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices, and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice. So in this case, um, we had four proficient, one exemplary, with the comments that you see here.
Move to rate as proficient.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Okay, and then for E, um, is shared vision. Successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. So here we had a unanimous five to zero from committee.
Motion to approve as proficient.
Second.
Seconded by Teresa. Any other discussion?
Just a small note that this is another area that I found the 360 really helpful, to get the direct feedback. Um, and additionally, I really look forward to seeing the shared vision in action moving forward with a new strategic plan.
Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So five to zero. Um, and then that brings us to the overall reading in professional culture, which was four proficient, one exemplary.
Motion to approve as proficient.
Second.
Moved by Joan, seconded by Kate. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's five to zero. Alright, so then that brings us down to the summary. Um, so in the, um, overall performance rating, um, we had four proficient and one exemplary. Let's discuss that piece.
Move to approve as proficient.
I'll second. Seconded by Joan. Any other discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so five to zero. Um, and overall impact on student learning rating, so this one was a little different for the public, it is not, um, the same proficient exemplary, it is, uh, moderate, low, moderate, high, is that?
Yeah.
Yes, low, moderate, high.
Yeah.
Um, so in this case, we had four committee members at moderate and one committee member at high.
That was fun at night when this was the last one, and you're double checking, like, why is this one?
Yeah. When you're going proficient, proficient, what?
Yeah.
Um, any discussion and motions on that piece?
Just that's semi-individual, but, um, yeah, it is different from everything else, and then they kinda like throw in this other question, but you don't really have, um, when we created the goals and the indicators and the standards, something for us to think about next time is remembering we have this question to assess on, um, because we didn't really pick any of the indicators that would have brought the data for us to, like, concretely assess the student learning. Um, we, you know, next year we'll have the MCAS, and at the end of this year, we'll have more of the Renaissance data, and we'll get to see, you know, some of the data from the new Coquelin decisions there. Um, so I just felt, I mean, I don't think it's low at all, and I know everything that's being done is very important and is building towards it, but I, I just felt that right now, based off of the data that we have as part of this evaluation, um, that was moderate.
Um, I will just add, I, I think this is one of the hardest ones to rate someone on, when they're not directly in the classroom, right? Because you're creating the environment, and you cite a wonderful thing with MCAS, and having just come out of two days of running MCAS in a building, like-
I know, I know.
You know, my concern is, I don't think it's gonna be anyone's fault, but I think that the, the dip is coming in that significantly because we've devalued that and taken that away.
However.
I hear what you were saying. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to, um, move the overall impact rating as moderate.
Second.
Moved by David, seconded by Kate. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So that passes five to zero. So that brings us to the end of the document. Um, that is all the goals, that is all the indicators, and we have voted on them and agree.
You know, it's more awkward than having your evaluation in public is then continuing to do business.
I know, right? This could not be any more awkward and any more cold, than just like, here's what it is. And imagine if you were, we were rating you poorly in like, half of these things. This would, this is the most awkward thing that a school committee member, uh, superintendent relationship can go through.
Well, it could be worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not the most awkward thing, but it's definitely, um, I appreciate the thorough feedback, just wanna let you all know that, so, and the process, so, thank you very much for it.
So, Emery, will, um, somebody add in, like, what we read, just so it's clear in one document, and then we repost it, or?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I think, um, I think I, I can take, I can take that, um, and/or work with Lisa to get, like, those things edited. This part, that part's easy, you know, it's all like composited, I can, I can- That part's easy, you know, it's all like composited, I can copy paste.
Yeah, goals and things in there.
I will say this on the record now, if somebody does the Kate part of it, I will do the composite, I actually can relate to the composite.
Oh, go to next time? We're already volunteering?
Get that in the minutes, Donna.
Yeah, put that in the minutes. David is on it for next time.
For composite, for composite.
Oh, I'll send out the Google forms.
Great, we're done.
We already figured out next year, Joan, David.
Okay, so I actually, I'm gonna pull one piece up real quick, just because it goes, and I think it'd be really good to just talk about this now. So under new business, number one, we actually have superintendent goal setting. So we did just finish this process, but we do need to, so we have a full cycle in the next round, need to start discussing what Tim's next set of goals are going to be, so what we were really just looking for was volunteers ideally to, to work with Tim to get the next set of goals running for the next round.
I'll do it.
I would like to.
Teresa and David?
Yeah.
Can somebody make a motion to that effect, so we can make it official?
Yeah, I motion that David and I are gluttons for punishment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That wasn't personal.
I'm gonna have to rob the glutton for punishment now.
And Emery, just the technicality, it's been a while since we did this, and I do not remember, I don't know if Donna or Priscilla remember, I do not remember how we actually got it to Desi in the format that they needed.
Oh, that's a great question.
Cause we just used the Google form, and somebody got it to Desi, but I don't know who that was.
I can honestly say it was not me.
Why do I think it was Priscilla?
Priscilla knows everything, so.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is true.
So, let's start with her and go from there.
Just so we make sure we get it.
Yeah, so make sure that's the next step.
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right, so then we'll jump back up under old business, and the next item on our agenda is, unless anybody has anything else pressing they need to discuss with superintendent goals, valuation of fabulous. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the long-term agenda. So, cause we, in our policies, we go over the long-term agenda once a month, this is the last meeting of the month, and we haven't done it yet, so we definitely need to throw it on there. So you've got the long-term agenda linked in your packets. We have been having comments in the sidebar, for the most part, we've hit them, occasionally we do not hit them, but is there anything anybody is seeing glaringly that needs to be addressed? I know coming up in the next meeting is gonna be the first one, actually after the elections, just for, as a reminder. Some of the things that I have on here, for example, are policy subcommittee update, but I could, you know, we can switch that. I had been trying to, as we, as we know, bounce back and forth between policy and budget, but then budget just takes over our lives for so many months that it's budget, 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 every single meeting. But I know we're talking a little bit policy today. We also have on there for the PD calendar, some transportation fee discussion, the late fees we've been discussing in budget subcommittee, tiered focus monitoring, vertex updates. We have a pretty decently full agenda for the next one, so please don't tell me you wanna add anything.
We may have an update on food service.
Okay.
Oh, the contracts.
Can you delete the bottom one, cause the purple line isn't?
The purple line's kind of throwing you off.
No, just, it's, we are.
Oh, no, no, it's because, well, for some reason.
So, I was originally moving it down, and I tried to delete it, and then it just made the line, I couldn't get rid of it.
Nope, I need to, I need to somehow give you like actual rights to make sure that you can do this.
No, he can just look at it, he doesn't get rights to go on.
Really quick, for the, for the PD calendar, I'm meeting with principals on that day, and I'm pretty sure you guys don't want the PD calendar to look at the Friday before.
Yes.
So I'm not sure I guess, feel about that, if we wanna move it to the 30th or not?
Yes, move it at least.
Yep, we can move it to the 30th.
With the PD calendar, could there be a quick update on where we are with the mental health first aid stuff with the town? Both this year and then any planning going ahead?
We're taking the youth one on Wednesday.
Yep, we are, Wednesday.
Are you taking it?
Yeah, all, all the central administration.
It's a good course, I took it.
What are you taking?
What'd you say, mental health?
The mental health first aid training.
Update, okay.
Think we wanted to add the food service on the 9th, is that right?
Yep, food service should be ready on the 9th.
I'll add that for the PD calendar.
And then, we were talking about a responsible use, responsible use policy, nevermind, it's on there for May 14th.
Do you have another policy subcommittee though, before?
You have to set in a state.
I can't remember if we did in the last meeting or we didn't.
I don't think we did.
We didn't, okay, so, okay, we're waiting until.
New member, right?
Yep.
You could probably, yeah.
We can get there. Can we get down to policy?
Yeah, that might be the only thing that needs to change, depending on calendars.
Yep. Yeah, so that's that, there's some, so April 30th, we have the school choice here, and cause that's, by law, we have to do that. Does that mean, is that one of the ones we have to post?
Two weeks in advance.
Two weeks in advance, same thing, yeah.
Yep.
So we'll make sure to touch base with Priscilla around that one.
Is it possible when we post that one, to be clear what the school choice policy is, cause that, it's taken on a different kind of tenor than what it actually is in like the federal government? This isn't about your ability to go to Blue Hills or any of those types of things. Is it possible for us to post just a blurb about what that vote actually is?
Yeah, I could probably use some.
What I don't wanna do is have a ton of people show up for public comment arguing about something that that, that this particular school choice is not.
Hundred percent, this is interesting, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's, it's a different, it's a different version of school choice.
It could be overwhelming, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just looking ahead at some of the quick things.
We just have to say in April, we can't go beyond April.
April 30th is a lot of budget, cause it's our quarterly report.
April 30th, yeah, there's a lot, of course, there's always a lot of budget, it's gonna start right over again as soon as we vote on this stuff. Quarterly report, rental fees, lots of, well, lots of budget things. We also want a Q3 report from facilities, are we asking for?
A Paul.
A Paul visit for that one?
Couldn't we just do that?
Well, we're supposed to, that was his new budget.
That was his new budget.
We're supposed to get the quarterly report from him.
But since, and we usually were doing at the same time that we were getting the quarterly report from our own finance, so, I mean, it would be ideal if we get them at the same time. Okay. And then, yeah, just looking ahead, I think right now, yeah, we have the, for May 14th, we have the final SAC quarterly report scheduled for that, so. And then some monthly things there, so May 28th is looking kinda light, not really unhappy about that, but I'm sure it will not stay light. And then we're into June, and then we're starting to look. Then we're starting to look towards the summer, so. We do the school committee reorg on the 4th, just as a reminder.
No, it's the 18th.
18th.
By policy, it's the second meeting.
Oh, sorry, why is, I don't know why I put it on the, I see your comment.
It's okay, I just moved it.
She just moved it with a comment that said, I moved this, cause you put it on the wrong.
So, so what I've been doing, tell me if you wanna do it differently, if I come out of a subcommittee or task force or anything, and we agree to something, I add it with the date that I add it, but if it's me looking at it at 2:00 in the morning, then I just make a comment, so you and Tom, Tim can see.
I think if you saw something that I glaringly did wrong like that, you could totally just move it with, and be like, I moved this.
Got it.
Okay. Let's see, what other question, obviously with handbooks in May, we have pushed that the last like couple of years, because they have not been ready, and we know that we're digital, but having it in the calendar is a good thing to have. And Theresa did also ask about SIPs the same night, which we should, we don't have these currently on here, you're talking about the updates, right, or you're talking about new ones?
Well, we need new ones.
Yeah, we need both.
Or, or a recommendation from Tim on how he wants to handle. The, the other thing that's not on here, and I don't know where we tie it in, is an update on the strategic plan currently, and then.
Where's going?
Where's it going?
I was gonna put on strategic initiatives on here somewhere, I will, I'll, let me work on this calendar and get that, I mean, what I would love to see is there's strategic initiatives, you know, we do a bridge plan or whatever it might be, have that conversation. And from there, have the school improvement plans come out, you're right, that's the, that's the big thing.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then this isn't directly tied to this, but just the school improvement plans reminded me, we updated our policies in school councils, and I don't think they ever got carried over into the policy manual, but also, Tim, before you came, we were trying to remind the principals and school councils that their minutes are supposed to come to you, and then you're supposed to share them with the school committee, and that hasn't been happening, so we're just, that communication's supposed to be in process.
See, the rental fees are on the 14th of May and April 30th?
Yeah, they're two whole dates, depend on when.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah.
But we were gonna add the transportation fee.
That's on the 9th.
It is.
Right, the late fee that we talked about?
Yeah, that's on April 9th.
Yeah, the last conversation in budget sub was it was gonna be either that April or May meeting, depending on what you and Tim decided.
That's why we do this once a month, and just kinda all pow hour on the long term. Sometimes it's really short, and it's just like, email me, and then sometimes we're like, whoa, 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 whoa. There's a lot of stuff missing here.
So we don't think for April 9th, there'll be, unless something comes up, that that's pretty full and that won't shift?
I don't think that should.
Or add, not shift.
Unless something major comes up, yeah, because we got Vertex coming, and they're usually pretty, that's usually a pretty decent presentation.
Yes, but you will need us to go on executive session about some of the union stuff.
Yes.
As well as our ongoing negotiations with Superintendent Luff.
Yep. Yeah, we'll definitely need one there. We're gonna probably need at least some sort of executive session for several different meetings going forward, whether it be like a quick half hour update, or just, or an hour after, but we'll try to do it before, just because it makes it easier for people not to be crappy and tired, but if we have a lot of conflicts, then we'll have to do it after.
I was just gonna say, can you poll us, cause like?
Yes, yep.
We each take a turn with having a hard time getting here.
Yeah, it hasn't worked really well, it's at the beginning of the school year, and then now it's starting to get into the, the rough time of the season with people's schedules. Yeah, I think we can do that. Okay, anything else on the long term? All right, perfect, all right.
Oh, sorry, there's one thing.
Yep.
I know we don't want more meetings, and I know we don't want workshops, but I have been talking with Superintendent Luff about, I do think we need a workshop on our minutes, and just like agenda packets and some of our operating protocols this spring, just to make sure all of our subcommittees are, are moving in the right direction in, in that regard.
I would propose if like May 28th stays really stupid light, maybe we could turn that into a half and half.
That last week of May is a nice lull.
What?
Can it be an email?
Who would that be for? Or we do a quick business meeting to start, and then workshop that.
Well, there's things in our policies not being adhered to in terms of minutes for subcommittees. And then just, we had, we had said in the fall, we would revisit a workshop self-evaluation in the spring, once our new member joined us, so we're approaching that time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm opposed to having a workshop on minutes, I think.
Well, that'd be one agenda item.
I think, I think we've talked for 15 minutes about budgets, and it's 9:48, and we have to go to executive session, so we can have this conversation offline, right? I can fuss about what our workshop is gonna be offline, okay, great, I'll fuss about it offline.
We can talk about scheduling 100% offline.
And the agenda, we can talk about the agenda.
And the agenda, yeah, definitely.
So expect an email from me. What was what?
Okay, all right, so we will move on to policy subcommittee update.
And just, I'm gonna, I asked you earlier tonight, but I think I'm gonna pull the conversation about policy JF off the agenda tonight, and then bring it back at a different time.
And I think that's.
Tim, I just fought for you.
You just talked about that policy.
Motion to reconsider?
Yeah, it's his reason.
I know.
It will be, but there was space, you guys, I think for the night, so just, that could be the placeholder for that. Yeah, we met on Monday, and Joe Kidd was with us, and he talked about just really needing to refresh the reasonable use policy, and looking at sort of technology use in a, with a bigger lens, but at the very least, refreshing our responsible use policy, coming to you guys, coming back to the policy subcommittee, but coming to, with a goal of coming to the school committee in May with a recommendation for a new, new language in that policy. But there is greater, a bigger discussion about overall technology use and how to break out the pieces of that, probably in procedure, more so than in policy. But there will be an update for the responsible use. And then we talked about the thing that's being punted, JG, what was it, JF, a little bit. You guys will set your next date with your new member, and we talked about the guidelines, which I would recommend today, although what you, what you guys were talking about minutes, it's making me pause, but what we wanted to ask was that we recommend you vote to approve the policy guidelines document with the understanding that the tracking section is sort of a living section, because the people on that subcommittee were sort of proving it and using it, and it may need to be updated, changed, based on how the people, you know, the, the tracking is going. But that's our recommendation. Now, that has discussion and is in agreement with all the documentation that I could find in terms of how our secretary would is accountable for minutes and sharing minutes. So, we were pretty confident about that, until you brought up a workshop about minutes. So, that would be my recommend, our recommendation, I think. Did I miss anything, Joan?
No, other than, I believe we're gonna need a vote from the committee, cause I will be the last man standing on the policy subcommittee when it's elections? April 7th, is that this Monday or next Monday?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. And so, I would recommend that we vote to make me the chair of the policy subcommittee, so that we can continue movement as we shift to the transition, and say thank you to Kate for being the chair for so long.
Does anybody wanna make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that Joan can be the chair, and add a friendly amendment if she accepts that I can join her, at least for the spring, just for the spring, April through June, on the policy subcommittee.
I'm open to whoever wants to do the work, so, by all means.
Awesome, David seconded that with the friendly amendment. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, do you, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the policy guidelines that Kate was discussing before.
Second.
So you're moving on, so the second agenda item, the policy guidelines that we have in our packets. Okay, so moved by Joan to approve the policy guidelines, and seconded by Kate. Any discussion on those policy guidelines that are, yes?
Priscilla, thank you so much, Kate and Joan, for working on this, this is really great. Or Kate, cause Joan's pointing at you. Just a couple of things that I'm wondering if we could edit, add in. So, under the purpose, although I definitely agree with what you have written about the work of the policy subcommittee is to assist the school committee in maintaining a timely response to changing laws and district needs that may require an adjustment to district policy. We also, under our policy guidelines and by law, have, the, the purpose of our policy subcommittee is to also be the legislative body and to formulate and adopt policy for our district, and direct our superintendent on what to implement and evaluate if our policies are being followed. So I would like to offer we add that language, and then maybe just reference in the policy manual, the specific policies that we're supposed to be following, which are BA, BBA, BGB, BGC, BGB, BGE, and BGF. Like, all of those should guide the work of the policy subcommittee.
Did you comment on that, or like, can everybody see that?
I did not comment, because that violates the medical.
Not my first year ago.
I can, I can, I have it written down, I can email it if you want the exact.
I still don't know the best way to put it on it, like, we should make the change, and then bring it back next meeting for you guys to approve?
I think unless there's a lot of significant things that we're asking, I think we can approve it with like, with those additions type of, you know what I mean, approval, unless.
I think the committee should approve it to the policy subcommittee, which consists of Teresa and myself, to finalize the language. You okay with that, cause then?
Yeah. And then just one other very small edit, it says below that we did the policy audit in 2019, and although we definitely started it in 2019, we finalized the vote in September of '22, so we should just be clear for new members who are like, you said you did this work then, but then on other areas, it says 22.
Well, and it captures too, how big of a job it is.
Yeah. So those are just my two minor edits, otherwise, thank you so much, I think it's a great document, and captures, you know, a lot of hard work.
Yeah, very, very.
And I will say, I'm sorry.
No, I was saying, very all encompassing, it was, it was, yeah, very thorough, that's what I was looking for, thorough.
I fully acknowledge that the policy subcommittee last, you know, spring, and, and we've, we got, in terms of keeping up with every mask change, we tried to do triage, right? There wasn't, with everything else going on, it was, you know, we, we probably didn't track and keep up as much as we would have otherwise, I suppose. But, especially with our, with the intricacy of the work, the tediousness of the work, like it's, I think having Lisa is helping.
The intricacy of the work, the tediousness of the work, like it's, I think having Lisa is helping to that end in terms of tracking it well so that. We don't leave things as long and have a situation where, you know, it's 20 years or whatever and we haven't looked at the things. So we are doing that, but I just, I guess I'm just saying it's a juggling act, right? Like both for Tim and the committee. Who might be, uh, being pulled into other things as well, but, um. Good luck.
Um, okay. So I just sort of want, don't want to leave the motion on the table. So, um, the motion was to approve. Can you remind me exactly to approve it with the language changes that Teresa suggested and to please have it go back to the subcommittee for those edits?
For those edits, yeah.
Okay, I, I got that. Okay. Seconded by Kate. All right. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's five to zero. Can't believe I actually was able to paraphrase that.
That was a good one.
It was impressive.
All right. So that brings us to the end of policy. Any other, uh, policy items before we move on? Great. Um, okay. So under new business, the first item we already took care of with the superintendent goal setting. So the next item is the school committee member handbook. So we had said we would look at this and amend before, uh, obviously the election and a new member joins. I do want to point out, it says Chair Mrs. Olin, Ms. Stewart, thank you, Ms. Stewart, for helping me with this one. I said I would do it and then, um, went to a conference and totally like forgot to do my work, uh, committee member work. So Teresa pulled this out for me and made some edits, um, which we have in our school committee and our, um, linked in our. Agenda. So any questions, concerns, discussion on the handbook?
I can just run us through it really quick. So, um, you know, 22, I think David started the first draft and then Anne Marie, you and I made some changes in 23 and now we're making some changes again. So it really has been a team effort over the years. So thank you to everybody. Um, anything I added or edited, I highlighted. Um, a lot of it is just housekeeping, like updating emails and, um. The proper protocol and making sure the links work. Some of the links were out of date. Um, but I did add, um. I was just trying to think if I was a new member again and coming into this very overwhelming role, what would I want on paper to like consistently be able to reference? So I did add some things about when our schedule is for the rest of this year. Not just like a general like go here, but these are the dates that we're hoping you are gonna be able to join us on. I did add some budget information further in, um, just specifying, um, I needed to update the part on what used to be called public forum because we now call it public comments. So we made those changes. And then there were a couple of policy changes we made over the last two years. So I just made sure we were referencing those correctly. The one area that I wanted to just ask everybody on, if you scroll down under budget, I linked to our budget calendar. Instead of having like a new, this is like page 13. Um, I just linked to the budget calendar and talked through it, but we previously had. If you go down to page 15, the whole like, the way Karen used to do it in the, the graph format. And I was gonna just take that out, but I wanted to make sure everybody was okay with it. Just like instead of having it laid out there, um, just linking to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody good with that? Okay. So I can, I can delete that. And then there was up a little bit further. I had a question for discussion. Um.
Protocol.
Sorry.
Protocol about.
Yeah, yeah. What page is that on again?
That was pretty close to the top, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think for that.
For me, you're looking for where that lived?
Yeah, I think you were hovering over it.
Yeah. So about so many, like this is what we always say that we're gonna do. Do we want to just keep it and continue to strive to that? Or do we want any change?
Wait, which one are you talking about?
Talking about page three, the one of school committee protocols?
Submit any questions?
Yeah, that one.
On a meeting packets to the superintendent. Didn't we change that to the chair? Or, or school committee or subcommittee chairs?
Well, on the meeting packet? No, it was still, it was, it was the superintendent CC'd the chair.
Yeah.
But admittedly, I like, I CC you on some stuff, but then if it was like a budget thing, I wasn't because like I was the chair of budget subcommittee. So do we just leave it for now? Or, or how did everybody want this in our member handbook?
So it's always better to have the tightest thing that you want in writing.
Right.
Because you can always be more lenient than, right? It's easier to loosen up than tighten up.
Right. Yep. So do we want to leave this or change it?
I would leave it.
I would leave it as well.
Okay. So I'm just gonna resolve my comment. Um, and was there one more area I said, pointed discussion? Yeah. So the meeting procedures.
Same comment.
Keep it.
Keep it.
Yeah, if the.
Yeah, cause we don't.
Yeah, these are, these are like.
Good point.
Rules. So technically if we, if, if we ever needed to invoke very serious rules because people are being like crazy, we have them.
Okay. So I'll resolve that. We agree to keep it. Um, so what I will do, if everyone is okay later on, I will just update the pages because some of it got moved with edits. And then I will take out that chart at the end about the budget calendar. Is there anything else anybody would like me to edit at this time?
No, thank you.
Nope.
Move to approve with edits? Or did we already make the motion?
No, we did not.
I will second with thanks to Teresa and David and Anne Marie.
Yeah. Good job. Moved by David, seconded by Joan. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So Anne Marie, I will clean that up and then somehow we will have to get it to the person on the ballot. Because in Norwood, it turns around very quickly where she will be elected on Monday, the 7th. Need to follow some of this protocol with the town clerk. So she is ready to go on the night.
Yep.
Quick turnaround.
Very quick turnaround. I will clean it up tonight until you have it tomorrow.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, so that brings us to our last agenda item, which is our recognition of one Ms. Kate's having done. I'm gonna let Mr. Love start us off.
Sure. And I'll be brief, but I just wanna, you know, obviously Kate, this is your last school committee meeting with us. After three years, only one year with me, you're not even in one year with me. Um, I just, since I've been on the committee recognizing your work. Been on the committee, been superintendent. I want to recognize your, your work on the policy subcommittee. Um, that's been extensive, extensive. But also your work in the elementary study and really like filling me in and bringing me into that as I, as I came into the district. It was really incredible. Your passion and your desire to make sure the community really has what they, what they needed to know about the situation and all facets of the, of the project were met were extraordinary. But really, I want to say I first met you in the superintendent search subcommittee. Um, and you were one of the first faces I saw in Norwood. And it was one of the reasons that I said that I felt really comfortable coming into the interview process. Feeling like I'd be a part of the community and seeing kind of how you, how you were there. And it was just really welcoming and I just. Your work and your dedication to the district, um, and the community has shown and shined so brightly throughout the time I've been here so far. I just really appreciate it. I'm gonna miss you. Very much so. And I just want to thank you for all the, all that you've done for, uh, me, but also for, for Norwood in general.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll go next.
This is so weird.
So now we start the roast of Kate.
You started that like an hour ago.
I know I, I did actually start an hour ago when I, I, um, lovingly called out the, um, the delayed votes. And it's, but it's become a thing where I absolutely, I, I hear four yays and I just wait. And Kate catches up. Um, but it's, uh, it has been wonderful working with you, um, the, these last three years, um, when I worked with you on policy subcommittee. Your drive and your passion for the students and just the community in general is, is unparalleled. Um, you really do care quite, quite a lot. You're passionate, um, even when you're exhausted and you're starting to lose your focus. It's, um, you know, you've always got a great point and, and a great attitude. And just a really, um, well-rounded way of looking at all the problems and trying to solve them. And I really do appreciate, um, the three years that you've put into the board. And I want to miss you.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll just go right down the line. Kate, thank you. Um, it, it's been wonderful to get to know you. Um, and from when you started to now, I feel like I have a new friend, which is wonderful. And I know we've worked a lot together. Um, and you are a wonderful balance. You are incredibly focused, yet something that I struggle with at times is, um, centered. And, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Even killed?
Even kill, um, is the word I'm looking for. And it's, um, been a pleasure to work with you. Um, enjoy all of your free time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, David.
So Kate and I are seat buddies, um, because we are on the same election cycle. So Kate and I actually knew each other even before. School committee, we go to the same church and I remember getting a phone call. Being like, hey, I think I'm gonna run for school committee. Can you come to this driveway where I'm having people sign papers? And it was like, wasn't it like two or three days before?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was real, it was really soon. So Kate and I have spent a lot of time from that first driveway to, um, being on street corners together, which also sounds funny. Being on street corners together, holding signs, um, being through that same, um, campaign election and that, that came, that campaign was a, it was a proud moment for Norwood in terms of. The amount of voter, um, engagement that came out and the amount of people who were, who were so heavily invested in the schools. To being on the policy subcommittee together. Um, so I have really enjoyed my time with you in school committee and greatly appreciate that. And I'm sad that I'm losing you as my seat buddy and on the policy subcommittee. Um, but now that you're no longer a school committee member, we can bug you to start an education fund. So you're not getting away and we will still be bothering you to, to make a strong commitment to Norwood education. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Joan.
You're gonna block all our numbers. I think I, I think I got a similar phone call in 2022. Hey, I think I'm running.
Yeah.
Tell me what I need to know. And I'm glad I didn't scare you away. Cause I know some people say, don't ask me what it means to be a school committee member. Um, no, I just, I just echo everything, Kate. I mean, you, you came in and, um, I remember you campaigned on communication and transparency. And I think from day one, you, you reminded us to always communicate and be transparent. And you've always brought the community's concerns to the table and you listen. Uh, you're compassionate, you're kind. I think our administration has always found that you are supportive of them and, and elevated their voices. I don't think I got to serve on a subcommittee with you, but we did do some impact bargaining together with Jody. Start times. You joined me on that when you first came. Maybe you blocked it out, but you did. You remember, right? Okay. I'm not making it, I'm not making it up. No, you jumped on cause you, cause it was, cause it was Maya and I, and then you jumped on because Maya, Maya, Maya left me. Um, but you know, to the points everybody's making your work on policy. Thank you. Um, the elementary study, you, you jumped in when we needed leadership. So thank you. Superintendent search, the superintendent evaluation and goal setting this past year, um, none of that is easy and I appreciate it. And, um, I have no doubt you will continue to make impact because you were making impact in our town before and I know you'll continue to do so.
Thanks, Teresa.
Yeah.
It's another thoroughly roast of Kate.
Yeah.
We have community a large position, uh, for a super, for a principal search, just saying, right?
We're signing you up for another committee.
She's blocking your phone number too.
So she doesn't have to come to four hour meetings on Wednesday nights. Maybe we can, uh.
Well, if I could, and then I won't do an addenda, I'll just, I just want to thank everybody in the room. I, I didn't make a, like a speech, but I just made notes. Because as we all know, after nine o'clock, I start to lose coherence. Um, it's been my privilege to serve with you all, uh, my colleagues. And then also to, um, it's been my humble privilege to have a glimpse into the world of education and education. Professionals and what it is that you face and deal with and, um. The challenges put in front of you and despite that, the dedication and the. Fortitude that you move forward with. It's incredible. Um. This position, this volunteer position is very challenging. I didn't know what I was getting into, even though I'd had conversations, even though I was. Active in the community as a parent and paying attention and watching school committee, uh, meetings. For a couple of years before I ran, uh, it is hard to know what you don't know. Uh, and it's still one of the most rewarding things that I've done. It's inconvenient, but necessary was one of the things I wrote down. So that just means that, um. You know, I felt like I needed to run and wanted to run. And it wasn't, you know, necessarily, my kids were little. It was, it's not necessarily the easy thing to do. And I know a lot of people think that, whether it's town meeting or, uh, school committee. But it's really important, especially now that, uh, we own our communities, that we work together, that we use empathy, that we listen to each other. There's too much at stake to not do it, to walk away, to give up. Uh, so I just encourage everybody to, um, consider service, but also to stay involved however you can. I just want to say that I understand that this is also an unpopular position. It's like you're signing up for the hot seat. Um, and a little bit about, I didn't know what I didn't know, but also a lot of people don't. Don't know. And I would just continue, uh, continue to ask that the public also use empathy with each other. Parents with teachers, teachers with parents, I just all the way around because sometimes. And then, you know, the public with what these boards are doing because sometimes we can't share all of the things, you know, there are laws that protect our students. There are laws that protect our teachers where folks think they have a big picture, but they might just have a little piece of the picture. And so. Though it is challenging, please know that the people here are trying to make the best long-term decisions, even when it seems like. We're making crappy, uh, short-term decisions. Um. So again, I thank everyone and this, I will start rambling, so I'm not going to do that. Thank you, everybody. And it's been my pleasure and I won't be going away. I will be a parent and a community supporter and I'm there if you need me. Thanks.
And can we please get her name on the wall? Never here.
She was never here.
I did, I did ask Priscilla and they come in cycles, so it, it's gonna happen. It's definitely gonna happen. I promise.
All right. We've only been asking for three years.
You guys take a picture and send it to me.
It will go on there.
We'll have you back in when they cut it out.
Or can somebody just go up and engrave it? Who knows how to do that? Maybe one of our art students.
Someone has to have one of those engraving pens, right?
That is more complicated than I would think it is.
Three years complicated?
Much more complicated.
Alrighty, alright. Um, so hard to follow that. Uh, but that does bring us to, I know it just sounds like we all feel like we just did a little bit of addenda, but that brings us to school committee addenda. Does anyone have anything non-Kate to, to talk about Teresa?
I have one thing I wrote down and I have no idea what I meant anymore. So, um, I'm not sure. But I did want to just remind everybody over with Anne Marie, um, David and Joan, I don't think you signed, and we do have all those advocacy letters that we approved last time. Okay, perfect. I did email those out, um, last week, the day after we approved them. So they've been emailed to all the elected officials, but we want to get out the paper copies. And then, um. Not only Kate, are you, um, gonna no longer be part of the, the committee, but, um, this will be the first time in three years that the makeup of our committee is changing. And it's the first and only time in my tenure on the school committee that we had the same committee for three years. And I think we all collectively did some really amazing work and I want to acknowledge everybody.
Kate, do you have anything else to give me?
I don't. Look for my letter in the record. I'm kidding. I'm, I'm not, I've, I've done it before.
Joe.
I, my addenda is really about the budget and, and the cuts that we just made. Um, so I know, I don't want anyone. To the point of, of, um, you don't know what you're getting into on, when you're on school committee until you're in it. While it may seem like we are laughing and joking, um, I can tell you that all of us have agonized over three people losing their positions. What that means to those individual people, what that means for our, our, our kids and our schools. It's important to know that, you know, we, everything that you see in this meeting, we can't talk to each other about before, but we've all reviewed and read. We got to, you heard JJ mention that we get the packets on Friday. So we have known that we, that this was going to be before us for a while. And I know I myself have lost sleep. I know many of us have lost sleep. I know we will continue to lose sleep over that. And so. When you see us make decisions that impact people's lives, please.
And so when you see us make decisions that impact people's lives, please don't mistake the fact that we are then able, are we at two hours later? Two hours later can laugh and joke because if we can't laugh and joke and roast Kate, we're gonna cry because we all feel that. I know all of my committee members feel that. It is not a duty that we take lightly. The budget is a huge issue for us and we are very well aware of the consequences of the actions that, and the things that we need to vote on. And so what I want to say is that I, I'm confident that every single one of us is looking for the greater whole. And how do we make sure that we are positioning the system as a whole in the best position within all of the constraints of the laws and what we must do? And I just want to say that we don't take those decisions lightly. And I don't want people to misunderstand the fact that later on, we can have these kind of more lightheaded conversations. Because again, like we've, we've known that this was coming for two or three weeks and have read through everything and have grilled people and have asked questions. And we're at that point unfortunately where these decisions have to be made because there is very, I don't think there is any fat. And we're gonna have to start talking about hard things. The hill I'm dying on is basically the hill of what is the core function of a school? Is it arts? Is it academics? Is it athletics? And if you have to rank order those choices, because that's where we're at, which one comes in first? And ideally, we would never have to rank order those choices. But we're at that point now where we do, where we have to. So sorry, I'm the downer addendum, but I, that's, that's my addenda for this evening.
Thank you, Joan. David?
Just to say thank you again to Kate for everything. I think to the budget conversation, obviously this month, we've had a lot of interaction with people from the community and we appreciate that, you know, interaction. I will say, you know, I'm in a unique position where I have lived on the other side of that, where I have also been, you know, in schools, work in schools, you know, are subject to budgets. And, you know, it's, it's a little bit different because it is your livelihood, so you understand that. And I just want to make sure, and it's really just echoing what, what Joan said, but, you know, to, I think I had said it at a previous meeting, how seriously we take this and that, you know, right? Like the worst part about this position is, is making, having to make decisions like this. Unfortunately, we live in a society that doesn't give public schools the, you know, an unlimited checkbook. And I think that public schools, especially in this region and this state, are one of the greatest things that we, that our society has created. Because you can talk to three different generations that have all touched public schools, which is really, really cool. And, you know, specifically to those cuts that we have to make, you know, I had said that you're trying to make the decision with the least amount of collateral damage to students. And unfortunately, in trying to do that, you always have to assume that there's going to be some sort of collateral damage. So we, we understand that. We take that role very seriously. It is a very difficult role. And I guess we appreciate, you know, the community making it difficult and supporting that. But, you know, sort of just our chance to respond because we've listened quite a bit. So we hear you, but also want to sort of share our side. Well, thank you.
I, I want to take some pieces of what my colleagues have said and echo them and just expand. And I do want to say, you know, while we're talking about being members, you know, make sure you go out and vote. So the election for the town will be April 7th before our next meeting. So I just want to make sure to put that out there. Historically, these town elections, if they don't, aren't surrounded by some sort of a, you know, national election or, you know, we get pretty low voter turnout. And that's, you know, I, I feel like we, we hear from a lot of people when they come in and something is going to affect them or their children. And that's wonderful. Please do, keep coming. I'm not suggesting you don't. But I also feel like some of those people, we don't see them at the ballot box. And whether for good or bad, I am for democracy of all ends. I mean, it's, I, I ran unopposed and I hated it, every second of it, because I don't think that's the right way to do things. Only the first time. The second time was not, definitely not. We had, we had a three-way, a three, three-person. Joan, it's your, wearing, she's wearing off on me. She's rubbing off on me. Her underwear nose. I am, I, I, I know, it's, it's that point of the night. But and to Joan's point actually about the joking and the laughing, I don't, I do want to just really kind of expound on that because there are many meetings. There are the, the role that you don't know what you don't know. The role of, of the school committee member of, of elected officials in town is sometimes really unseen by a lot of, by a lot of people. It was definitely unseen by me before I got into this position, I'll tell you that. And I was reminded of that this evening, actually, when we had the students. And we were, you know, having some pizza beforehand, actually. And one of them, the very first thing she asked me, she said, I hope this doesn't sound rude, but do you do anything else? And I was like, oh, no, that's not rude at all. And, and I said, you know, no, I, I, she said, no, I'm wondering, you know, do you have a job? Or I was like, no, I have a full-time job and I have two kids, you know, one still in school. And, and she was absolutely like flabbergasted that I could possibly be the chair of the school committee and have a full-time job and have kids in the district, you know, or in, in town. And I just, yeah, I think that a lot of people, you know, on the one hand, they know we're doing a lot of work. And on the other hand, it, it flies so under the radar that people are like, oh, how can you just make these cavalier decisions with my children's education? You only go to four hours a meeting a week. And it's definitely not the case. I was looking back at my calendar. I think I've spent a minimum of 10 hours a week in meetings alone in the last several weeks in budget season. And that's a light week. And that's on top of the, the other, you know, reviews and communications and work that we're doing. And then on top of that, we're in subcommittees where we're not allowed by law to have a, you know, to discuss things with our five-person committees. So we get into these meetings and they become really long because we're actually having the conversations that we need to have. So I just, I just wanted to expand on that, that I'm not trying to be a martyr. I'm not trying to say woe is me by any stretch. I have totally enjoyed every, every minute of doing this. But I just feel like it, it bears repeating, you know, some of the things that my colleagues have said. And then, like I said, that was just a really profound, you know, moment that even somebody coming in to pretend they're me in this seat was like, you can't possibly, you know, you know, do something else outside of this. No, 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 we, we definitely do. And to that end, I just want to make sure that, you know, the public understands, again, you know, to my other, my colleagues' points that we pore over these things, we really agonize over them, we don't make these decisions lightly by any stretch. I, I myself look at every angle. Can I possibly ask them to do this? Can I possibly ask somebody to do that? You know, and, and when we come back to the same decision, you know, I feel like when I asked the committee to vote on our final budget this evening, it was very one line. This is okay, we're not coming back with any changes. And it sums up hours of work that went into it. So I just really want to, really want to express that to the public that I take this job extremely seriously. I look at things very pragmatically, like in, and, and I know that doesn't always come out. And I know people are still going to be upset either way. You know, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. So I, yeah. But having said that, vote. I mean, we talk about this a lot when somebody doesn't like what they see. They said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote you out. And then sometimes it doesn't happen. And that kind of, I, I really, I wish sometimes there would be that, that engagement, a lot more of that engagement. So I'm encouraging everybody on April 7th to get out and vote for every position, even if it's uncontested. Get out there, do a, put your ballot in, do your civic duty and vote. Okay, so on that diatribe, that does bring us to our next item on the agenda, which is executive session. So we do need to go into that unfortunately. We will only reconvene for the purposes of adjournment. I do need a motion to go into executive session. Moved by David. Is there a second? Seconded by Joan. I need to poll individually.
And just to make sure to clarify in the minutes, it's to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations.
I always forget to say that.
Non-union personnel or superintendent.
Correct. And so that was moved by David, seconded by Joan. Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm E.S. as well. So we will go into executive session. As I said, we will only reconvene for the purposes of adjournment. We will be back again on Wednesday, April 9th, back here in this room at 7:00 P.M. for our regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and have a wonderful couple of weeks.